Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, March twenty sixth board meeting of the town of Newcastle. Uh, the board has been in executive session discussing appointments to committees and consulting with and getting legal advice from the town attorney. May I have a motion to close the exact session and open the work session?
One more.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so today I want to start by welcoming Kelly Branco from our epic committee. Every person is included is what epic stands for. Um, and Kelly is going to give us um, a presentation on the Anderson Center for Autism and an initiative to foster neurodiversity friendly community to enhance understanding and better interactions with individuals with special needs and promote autism awareness and inclusion. So, welcome Kelly.
Thank you.
And um, I'll give you the floor, go ahead.
Sure, well, thank you all for having me here. I very much appreciate you giving me this time to share my experience and the initiative that we've been discussing as the epic committee and further. Um, I'd like to start with just a little bit of information about myself and how I'm tied to autism. And I shared this this past week at the Yes She Can annual benefit, which was honoring myself and two other individuals for the work that we've done in the autism community. So, I was very fortunate to be one of those honorees. And I thought that what I shared was very impactful and hoping the same is true here. So, my younger brother Danny was diagnosed with autism when I was about five years old. So, my family has been a part of the autism community for nearly my entire life. I have always known that people have differing ways of seeing the world and that it is important to acknowledge and embrace that fact. Yet, as I continue to go through life, I realized that many people unfortunately did not have the same empathetic perspective. While there have been times when the word autism has triggered a flurry of emotions, like when we received my daughter Maddie's diagnosis, I have learned that the best way to help make the world a more empathetic place for my brother and daughter was to take on the responsibility of educating as many people as I can about what autism means to me. In April of last year, I visited the second through fourth grade classes in the Chapua school district and spoke about autism awareness. I shared a video of my brother discussing what autism means to him and how to be a good friend to someone who may be different from you, followed by a Q and A with myself and the students, which second through fourth, you can imagine the questions were all over the place, but very much welcome. Hearing the children share their interest in learning more about those with autism was such a fulfilling experience. I knew I had to do more to spread awareness at a young age. I soon after began writing My Sister Maddie, which I'd like to leave here for you and Maddie and her siblings signed for you, um, which offers a light introduction to neurodiversity from the perspective of a loving sibling. I hope the book is shared in schools and in the community to make other children more aware of a neurodivergent individuals at a young age and show children is okay to ask questions. Asking questions just shows you care, yet as adults, I think we can let the concern over saying the right thing overwhelm the good intention of wanting to be a good friend to someone. I want children to ask how Maddie's speech development is going. I want her to be invited to parties, even if she can only stay twenty minutes because she gets overwhelmed by the noise. I want other moms to lean on me as a friend without worrying I will compare their struggles to ours. We should not be in competition as parents and should have compassion for the mom who is concerned that their child skips a number counting to ten as much as the mom who is concerned their child hasn't yet said I love you at five years old. All of our feelings are valid and coming from a place of wanting the best for our children. I hope by beginning the conversation about neurodiversity at a young age through our book My Sister Maddie makes the next generation more comfortable learning about and empathizing with my brother Danny and my daughter Maddie. So, that gives you a bit of perspective personally as to why I think this is such an important initiative. And I've shared in advance some information which you may or may not be aware of, but I think that a Harvard um, a Harvard article that was written had a really interesting quote, which I think resonates really well. It's neurodiversity describes the idea that people experience and interact with the world around them in many different ways and there is no right way of thinking, learning and behaving and differences are not viewed as deficits. And I think that's really, really important. And while that's typically referred to in the autism world or with individuals with ADHD, it's important to acknowledge we all have, we all have unique ways of processing information, which impacts the way we learn at school, at work, at home and in the community. Autism specifically is often referred to as the spectrum as those with an autism diagnosis may present their unique challenges in varying ways and to varying degrees. The typical consistent challenge surrounds interaction with those in the community, whether it be communication or behavior, which is why it is so important for an individual with an autism diagnosis to feel support from the community so they may truly integrate and feel the same benefit as their neurotypical peers from birth through adulthood. As a community, we have ver- we have been very focused on autism awareness and inclusion in the school district and we want to similarly engage the community to be as aware and inclusive as possible outside of the school setting. Epic is a town organization whose mission is to improve the quality of life for people with special needs by increasing awareness and promoting full inclusion in the community. Many epic members are parents of children and adults with disabilities and are passionate about the community embracing this mission. Education is needed about interacting with those who have visible and invisible needs, which require greater supports than may be evident to the general community. Given the increase in autism diagnoses globally, this is something that will be even more relevant and necessary going forward for our community and others. Our neighbors in Bedford and Cottona have implemented the inclusive initiative, making theirs the first neurodivergent supportive town in Westchester. And we would be thrilled to follow suit as this initiative expands throughout the county. The Anderson Center for Autism has worked with the inclusive initiative to offer training to local businesses, individuals and first responders for those in the Bedford and Cottona community and we'd love to embrace a similar initiative.
Well, thank you so much, like that, that is absolutely wonderful. I know that we've always been a, a community that values inclusion in our schools, focus on that a lot. Uh, certainly a lot of people have moved to this district for that and so the, the kids are um, supported in that way.
Right.
And it only makes sense to then follow through and support the adult community. And when I heard about this program, I was very intrigued. And um, it was um, described to me by another member of your committee. And I thought that it was a, a really good thing to bring to Chapua and uh, the town of Newcastle. So, thank you for being here. And I, at this point, I'd like to open things up to everyone else to see if um, there are questions about your program. I don't know if you want to get into it in more detail before we ask questions, but.
Sure, I'm happy to. So, there's multiple ways in which the training can be implemented. It can be virtual, which I think is kind of the way of the world for many people and probably the most flexible option for others. Um, but there also are in-person options. And then there is an asynchronous online training program where individuals can take the training at their own speed. And there is a pre-assessment, initial screening where individuals are asked certain questions about what they know about autism, et cetera. And then there is a post questionnaire with similar questions to assess what was developed and what was learned from the training. There are a variety of different ways in which businesses can be involved. The autism inclusive environment is, I'd say, the baseline level, which can be implemented at both the individual, the business um, and first responder level. And I think that those are three very important areas, which would make sense to offer to those in the community. Um, for the first responders particularly, I think it would be really beneficial and helpful. Um, and I'm sure there is some facet of training already involved to some degree, but my daughter doesn't really communicate verbally, for example. So, if she were to wander off, not that she would ever, from school or from us, I, I would want a first responder to be able to understand that she's not being difficult. She just really cannot eloquently communicate what her needs are and what her address is or any information that my four and three-year-old maybe can a li- a little bit better.
So, how do you um, initiate your outreach, say, to businesses?
Sure, so I'd love to put together, I'd put together this one pager and I'd love to share it with the businesses in the community because I do think that a lot of local businesses specifically, they are parents of people in the community and either their children have gone through the school district or are going through the school district. So, they see the initiatives that are through via the special education communities and through CPSE, CSE, et cetera within the school district. So, in order to tie that into the community, I think that would really tap into individuals who are running their businesses locally and have them become engaged. Um, I also think the reference to the inclusive initiative in Bedford and Cottona is helpful because you can see that this has been implemented and really embraced in that community. So, having that initial example, I think is really helpful to show that it can happen and it can be a positive thing. Um, and same thing for the first responders, I can share information. Um, we're, our family is an open book, so I'm happy to even walk in myself and share information, whether it be via flyer or even a conversation with those in the community, including the first responders, to understand the importance and how it would really positively benefit our, our children.
Do you think there are um, businesses in Cottona and Bedford who would be willing to speak to businesses in, in our town?
Absolutely, so I've reached out to the inclusive initiative in advance. And so, once I have response from them, I'd love to ask for recommendations. And the Anderson Center has also offered to prepare a presentation to go into the specifics of the training a bit further so that we could better understand what would actually be offered.
This might be somewhere we can leverage um, partnership with the Chamber of Commerce as well.
That was my, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, absolutely.
What are the elements in the training? Like what, what exactly do people come away knowing or understanding better?
Sure, so I think it's a combination of picking up on those invisible, invisible traits that an individual with autism might predominantly display. So, either a meltdown or um, non-verbal communication, things of that nature, avoidance of eye contact, just identifying that this isn't someone who's being rude or just having a temper tantrum necessarily. It could be someone who has an invisible quote-unquote disability. And then being able to um, offer potentially, there are different facets that can be incorporated where depending on the level of organization you are, you can have a sensory area in your business and that can be something that can be offered to that individual to help them kind of calm themselves. Or also understanding that if you're probing someone with questions about can I help you, et cetera, that might trigger them to have some kind of behavioral reaction and that might be because they may be autistic. And so, even just knowing to kind of back off or maybe give the individual space, those are the type of things that are offered. Um, and then from a first responder perspective, similar type of instance and also just understanding um, the appropriate way to attempts to communicate with the individual and attempt to bring down their frustration level and anxiety level um, so that you can actually um, you know, move forward with, with what you're trying to accomplish.
I, I don't know if I read this in something you had sent or somewhere else, but when businesses complete this training, do they have some kind of a sticker that they're able to put?
So, you have a sticker in your window and there's a couple of different organizations. Actually, Great Ninja in Pleasantville has gone through the training through the inclusive initiative. So, they're probably the most local to us, I would say, that's gone through the training. And my daughter actually goes and attends the inclusive um, sessions they have on Sunday mornings and has been doing that for the last couple of years. And I know that they've been very interested in being involved and helping support. So, I think that's one of the businesses that would definitely be interested in coming here and, and speaking about their experience.
So, you basically, you personally seen the impact of the training on, on a local business?
Yes, so Great Ninja, for example, that inclusive um, offering that they have is that now they have two sessions, used to just be one. So, it's kind of tough to get in, but once you're in, you see that it's, it's basically the same kind of setup as a typical Great Ninja class, which I think a lot of our kids have been involved with to some varying degree, something similar. Um, but there is more one-on-one assistance. My daughter kind of likes to venture off and go to different obstacles and everyone's doing another thing and there's always someone that's following her and making sure she's doing something safely or trying to divert her back to being part of the group.
I just want to say thank you for being here. I have a cousin that is non-verbal and on the spectrum and I'm, you might be able to relate since your brother. Twenty years ago, the world was very different, ordinary, diverse children and it made it very difficult for my other cousins and my aunt and uncle to be out in certain cer- situations. They got a lot of questions, some nasty looks, it wasn't always easy. So, this is very near and dear to my heart, thank you.
Thank you, no, I appreciate it. I mean, my brother's thirty-four and he's, he's a big guy. He's six-two, two-eighty, he's towers over me and he can be behavioral sometimes and that can be really scary to other people to see this guy and not having any kind of contacts. Whereas my daughter, she, you might not notice at first because she's always smiling and she's just quiet and it seems like, oh, she just doesn't like to talk to people, maybe she's shy. Um, so it really exhibits itself in such different ways and I can personally attest to that.
Okay, thank you.
Question? How long is the training?
Sure, so let me just double check. There are a couple of different formats involved, I believe it's an hour and a half. Two and a half hours.
That's where you get to my office, two and a half hours?
Yes.
I'm Chief Carroll.
Hi, thanks so much.
I think it's fabulous and really grateful that you brought it to us.
Thank you.
It's really something I think everyone can benefit from, I don't even tell you that, but.
Absolutely. No, thank you. And I have to say, the, the schools have really embraced Maddie and have made such accommodations that I didn't even anticipate. I kind of expected to go into the transition to kindergarten and having to kind of fight for services she needed and I was pleasantly surprised that it's gone really well and it's been a very, really supportive environment.
That's good to hear.
Which is great to hear because with my brother, wasn't the case necessarily. So, it's, it's really um, reassuring to see that there is progress being made and let's continue that on.
And I, I think that overall, aside from helping businesses and first responders, you're going to, we are going to create an environment where all the families feel a lot more understanding and acceptance and feel a better sense of inclusion.
Right.
So, I think it's wonderful, thank you for taking the time to bring this to us and um, I look forward to our first step. So, maybe you and I can connect or you can connect with Jill and we can work on the first letter to go out or you can show us what you have.
That'd be great.
And um, we'll, we'll take that first step.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
Great, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, thank you. Yes, it's on Amazon, Target, everywhere, but um, it's just a special second card.
We'll put it on display.
It's at the Chapua Library.
I was gonna say, so, so we are participating in the display at Chapua Library? They wanted to know if I had an extra one?
I, I dropped one off earlier today.
Um, the book?
Yes.
Okay, I have to drop off um, one of the epic ambassador t-shirts. Yeah, so um, I was told that they have an extra one, so do you, what, what is the date?
Um, so it's for July, actually.
Oh, okay.
So, we've got plenty of time, I thought it was sooner as well. And so, I dropped it off this morning and it has, but um, yeah. Yeah, but thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, good night Kelly. Okay, and next we have uh, Nicole Rocher coming up for the Millwood West End Advisory Board and um, and a couple of other members of the board who will introduce themselves. Um, thank you so much for coming Nicole and uh,
Thank you for inviting us.
And everyone, we have been trying to do this for a while. We're looking forward to hearing about what's going on in Millwood, what the issues are and uh, a little bit about what you do, what, you know, you can introduce yourself and your mission for those who don't know.
Okay, sure.
But let's first um, introduce ourselves to, to the members.
Hi, I'm Sally, sorry, Sally Veras.
Sally, hello.
I'm David Valdez.
And you know what, it might be helpful because I know almost everybody at the table. So, so that David and Sally know who's a part of the board, who's, who's who.
Oh, well, I feel bad we didn't do this for Kelly. I'm Vicky Tip, I'm your town supervisor.
Hallie Shumtob, town board.
Hallie McCall, town board.
I'm Robert Derry, and then I'm Troy.
Hi, I'm Joshua Piron, town administrator.
Lino Choretta, town attorney.
Jen Carroll, police chief.
Jen Klein, town board.
Jeremy Saman, town board.
Nice, thank you.
And we have Christina. Who could be, who could be sitting here too, but.
Fine.
So, I think Lauren is uh, the wizard behind the wall controlling the slides. So, if Lauren can hear us, if we could have the first slide.
Where's Lauren?
Lauren's on, she's in there.
She's on Zing. You missed her.
She's gonna um, work with Nicole and presenting the slides.
See, great. So, uh, this mission statement is actually comes right off the website. And I could read a bit if everybody just wants to take a minute and, and read it so you know um, the big picture. Okay, next slide Lauren, is everybody good? So, I uh, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but I just wanted to give people a two-minute or less um, uh, story of the history of the Millwood West End Advisory Board, which was actually formed as the Millwood Task Force and that was in nineteen seventy-four, um, formed by Erwin Brussels Smith. And it was his um, and his wife who had the vision to, to create the board to address the perception that Millwood and the West End always had as the stepchild of the town of Newcastle and to advocate for um, equal distribution of town resources and improving the general quality of life and um, appearance of Millwood and the West End. Right, so they're basically, we could go on, anybody have any questions about this? Okay, uh, Lauren, we can go on. So, there are basically uh, three um, areas that I wanted to talk about and Sally and David will uh, chime in also. One of them is that of the Millwood West End Advisory Board being the eyes and ears uh, of Millwood and the West End. The other is to um, share how, in what ways the Millwood West End Advisory Board and previously the Millwood Task Force has assisted the town in town initiatives and be a resource for the town in that way. And then the third is um, some of our um, thoughts and, and desires about quali- quality of life issues in Millwood and the West End. So, um, we'll start with eyes and ears of the Millwood and the West End. And Sally and David and I, we're just talking outside, like, you know, sometimes you'll go by and see something like a down pole and I have a photograph of it in the next slide. And you see this pole down, like there was one coming out of the um, Teconic Parkway going north exit onto Pines Ridge Road. And you see the pole down and you say, oh surely somebody knows about that pole. And then three days later, oh surely someone, you know, must know about the pole. And then a week later, oh, you know, I'm sure someone, you know, has it on their list somewhere. You know, a month later, the pole is still there. So, you know, we, because, you know, town board members, people in building department aren't always navigating in the West End, you know, we can be there to alert um, town administrator to um, code enforcer about various things. So, um, we have had damaged property with um, fences, lampposts, signs, um, trees, et cetera. Um, another thing that we can alert the town to is the, and this is, I know been a bone of contention because the um, town code has changed regarding um, you know, like the campaign type sign that advertise businesses. And so, now they're putting um, the signs up on poles, you know, nailing them up higher than you can, anybody can remove them. So, that's an issue which, and some of these slides overlap, right? That's also a quality of life issue to be driving around with all the advertising. Um, one thing that we're seeing more of, and there's a picture of that also, is the tagging and the graffiti. Um, and we haven't brought this up before, um, but it is increasing, so.
Maybe next slide, because there's some pictures.
Is it a repetitive spot?
Um, Alapartis, Glendale Road, um, you know, the, the, the speed signs are tagged, right? So, and that's been, I don't know, s- ten months or so. So, the town, no, you know, nobody, no policeman or town person has looked up and said, oh my God, like we should replace that sign or we should fix that. So, we watch it and now we're showing it to you. Um, i- in the cement um, uh, guarding there, that's on Alapartis. That was uh, thankfully uh, put in by the town because there was a resident that took it upon themselves to just carve out of two other persons' properties and created four parking spaces while they were completely uh, land, none of it with a permit. And so, that's an example of the kinds of things that you're like, well, I wonder what's going on with that. So, we will call zoning and planning and well, they'll say, well, nothing. And then we'll say, well, you should go take a look because they, you know, drilled holes in town-owned walls and connected up the water system to the town drains and, you know, maybe go take a look. The result of that was uh, the saving of that entire mountainside, really, where the trees were starting to come down and the water and they dug a huge trench that they had actually piped underneath Alapartis Road to connect their water to, to the drains that go into, pardon me?
Is it back up to the sanctuary or different property?
It's, it's a, it's above it. So, it's in the water path that all the water that flows into the town of Austining, it's on that path. Um, so at any given time, there's actually water flowing at all times there from the mountain. Um, so that's, that's where that is. So, that did stop all the activity.
Can I ask you something? Did you say that they cut into someone else's property? And what did that property owner do? Did they even know?
Neither property owner really said anything, but later I found out that they did it kind of where there was not, I don't think intentionally that they said, here's the property line, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. What happened was they were just doing construction, so they didn't have anywhere to park. So, they slowly parked one car and then trucks and then two cars and then four cars.
But not, not on their own?
Not, it was because it was across the street. So, on Alapartis, it's like forty-five degrees slope where they were working and they, I mean, they were earthmoving, like they were, you know, they built a pool, they built a pool house, they cut down maybe forty percent of the trees and they repiped, they, they changed the entire water flow on the property by the time the Millwood West End Advisory Board kind of, you know, s- uh, got the town to act on it.
And the problem with this, like really egregious um, digging out, cutting out of the slope to make the parking is they exposed a lot of tree roots. And so, those trees are going to have to come down. They may die first or fall down, but they're gonna have to come down. And in terms of deep, making a hole, just a piece of history, Alapartis Road is a beautiful road, it's, it's, except it's very steep and very windy. And it has always had a storm management water problem. And it used to turn into a sheet of ice to the point that the school buses were no longer allowed to go down Alapartis Road. This goes back a number of years. So, the town at great expense rebuilt this beautiful stone wall to manage the water. And so, this app, this homeowner also put a hole to the stone and put a hole in the stone wall and put a big PVC pipe through it to drain water from his property. But I don't want to get, you know, stuck in details.
Yeah, we don't, but we're not, I don't think that people were not aware that the town of Newcastle is the owner of the stone wall, right? I just think that this person bought this property, they were like, listen, I'm gonna bore a hole through this thing because I want my water to go through there. And it's, you know, it could cause the wall to collapse or whatever. But it definitely disrupted and reintroduced the ice lake on Alapartis Road for this winter, which was why the town kind of went to that. So, we're saying all this not to so much focus on that property, but to say, look, this is an example of what the Millwood West End Advisory Board does. And just like on Al- another recent change of property on Alapartis Circle, property changed hands.
David, we have to move on.
Yeah, and you know, they just cleared.
Right, this is very compelling to listen to, but yeah, I appreciate it. Good, yeah, we do have to move on because we have other.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah.
So, but what, there is, uh, can we go back Lauren? There has been uh, yeah, other clear cutting on Alapartis Road for parking driveway situation. Um, other things that we've observed has been filling in wetlands, um, the use of uh, residential properties for commercial businesses, mostly uh, gar- like car, auto body, I'm not sure exactly what they're doing, properties that have like seven or eight cars with no license plates on them.
Retreats also, wasn't there, wasn't there, was it no way to retreat? The police wanted to have a retreat there? Retreats also, wasn't there, wasn't there, was it no way to retreat, the place wanted to have a retreat there? Is that in Millwood? Yeah.
What was, what was the question?
There was a property that wanted to have a retreat there, I believe.
It was on the West End?
Yeah, on the West End, it's alright, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um so, oh, we have one inhabited house that I'm aware of with the vines growing, and I know there's been a new uh law passed about that. And then we have also brought to attention to the planning board and town engineer. Um in one situation where an ex- there was an expired site plan where the landscaping and curbing and parking that was supposed to have been created wasn't done, and it wasn't done, and it wasn't done, I think, I if I remember correctly, it was like three or four years. And no ex- and no extension of the site plan was even asked for. So it was just sitting there, um an eyesore, but that has been taken care of. The illegal business sting operation, this goes back, Jill, maybe you remember this? By the um Country Deli downtown Millwood. There, well, there is now a massage place there, but there, this goes, there was previously a massage place there that was very questionable. And there were people who you would see entering the place, do you remember this Jeremy? And they were, they were.
Yes, for, for, for professional reasons, not like, not personal.
Jeremy, Robert Kraft.
Exactly, I do, for professional reasons, not like, not personal.
And the cars, the clients were parked in the back and they had New Jersey plates and Connecticut plates, and the town had a sting operation. It wasn't.
So I, I I would just um add that in our experience, we find the town extremely responsive, right? So that when we reach out to Tom Dupole or we reach out to someone in one of the environmental committees or whatever, there's a look into it, there's kind of a, an alert that goes on, and so we're glad for that.
Okay Lauren, next slide. Oh, next slide. Oh, that, oh, here we go. That pole there in the upper left, that was, was there for a long time, and when I finally brought it to Jill's attention, she took care of it like overnight. But, you know, she had to know about.
She just gotta scream at the right person.
Um and then.
That's at the, that's at the Teconic?
What?
That's at the entrance to the Teconic, where is that?
It's the exit from the Teconic.
On Pines Ridge.
I'm, I'm not always so successful, just to let you know.
Oh, on, on Pines Ridge.
I'm not always so successful.
Right by Amsterdam Park, yeah.
And the pole, and on the right.
Pretty egregious.
Uh the upper right is um.
That was the Con Ed property, right? The passive park.
Yeah, the paint line on the fence.
That was resolved a couple years ago, right?
And uh, yeah, that was there for a long time.
Passive park, I think it was just last year.
Was it last year?
Yeah, we, we didn't know that we were responsible. Con- it's Con Ed's property,
But then we have it again.
But we're responsible for everything, and no, we cannot use it for anything. It's called a passive park.
Passive park.
And what it means is you may look at it, but you may not walk on it, you may not touch it, you may not use it for anything. Otherwise, they're gonna take and put something away that we would not want, so, yeah, you, you.
Take it away. So you will be getting another photograph. It's not as bad as this, it's one railing.
Yeah, the, the fences are responsibility, we didn't realize it. So, yeah, as you could bring it to my attention, as you see it, we would definitely be out there.
Okay, uh next slides please Lauren. Okay, so this is assisting with town initiatives. And these are all uh projects we've participated with in the past, so one was uh collaborating uh with the DOT on um the intersection of Route one hundred, Route one thirty three, and where they get off the Teconic.
Yep.
You may remember that the cyclists used to have to cross Route one hundred at the Shell Station, then go up, cross one thirty three, then cross Route one hundred back to rejoin the trail. So now the cyclists stay on the east side of Route one hundred. I still think it's kind of dangerous, I think that where you come off the Teconic, I'm always worried about the cyclists there and I, I, what I had advocated for was a no turn on red. But anyway, so we worked on that with the um DOT and the town. We also collaborated on the design for the screening of the DOT building, I was looking for the plans for that, I actually have them somewhere um to show the, you know, on a slot, but I can't find that. And there was one tree that died that was used for the scre- part of the screening, and that eventually was removed and they haven't replaced it, and there's another tree that's dying. Not that this, I mean, the amount of screening was minimal at best, but some work needs to be done there. The other one was that we worked, collaborated on with the town was um the, the town at that time asked us to advise us on uses for the Amsterdam estate when it was first purchased by the town. Before it was decided to make the soccer fields. And then also um we've been given in the past um plans either that applicants have made or their preliminary um proposals that have been made uh to the town, mostly for special use permits, some of them are not for special use permits, just developments like the Shell Station, for example, that was always a, a Shell, that was always, I think it was a Shell Station, there was always a gas station. But um when the new owner John came in, you know, they, the town asked us to um be involved with that. Some of the special use permits um that have come up in the West End are for farming, for a hospital, for a residential area, but in a industrial area, so reversing the zoning, right? And um was that, that particular one, and it was a preliminary, it wasn't an actual application, right? It's when the applicant, potential applicant comes and says, this is what we're thinking, what do you think? And then environmental center. So that's something that we really would like to um be as involved in as possible, that as the town knows, um you know, if somebody has come before, usually Sabrina, um or the planning board, that we would, you know, really appreciate having a heads up so that we can get a lay of the land and get a feel for, you know, how people in the West End are going to be feeling about.
Alright. Yeah, I think there's two things that you all are already aware of that I'm sure will come into conversation soon, and that is Fable Farm has aspirations to build out a retail farming operation on Route one thirty four. Uh basically across the street from the Millwood Fire Station there. They've already moved all their barns and disassembled them and who, the, the person who owns that property, we don't know if there's a lease or not. But they've actually constructed buildings, the buildings are up, um and they're slowly assemble, reassembling whatever they're doing there that you can see off of Route one thirty four. But there's no, there are no permits in, but I believe there's been some conversation, but just so that the board is aware of that one. Um and then the light has kind of gone off of the, the town of Newcastle portion of the drug rehabilitation hospital on Quaker Ridge Road. Because it's in the town of Cortland, the permit has been actually, the special permit has actually been approved for the hospital there, but there's continuing litigation over that. But the owners have kind of, you know, it, it's too soon to characterize what they did, but they kind of said we won't touch the Newcastle piece, the originally granted an easement to use Glendale as the main road in and out.
Yeah, is that the, the Newcastle piece that's the parking area?
Yeah, it's the New Ca- it's the corner of Quaker Ridge Road and Glendale Road, and it's twenty four acres, it's a big piece of property. And they.
Our piece is, how many acres? Our piece is twenty four acres, right?
It is twenty four acres. And then the other piece in Cortland is roughly twenty four acres or equal, I'm not sure the exact number.
No, Newcastle I think is twenty eight and the Cortland piece is like, what's the number?
Okay.
Twelve or something.
Yes, I remember.
So in, in any case, the, you know, this will cycle back to Newcastle, I think, if it does proceed, because they're adjoining properties, the owners are still, even though they've changed LLCs and they've kind of fooled around with who the owner is, their, and the easement, their goal or their need is going to be to try to come and go from Glendale into the property and out. The, for us, in the, in that section of the West End, the idea of like a well lit hospital, and I mean, it is pitch black at night, like it is just complete, and all the residents and the culture of that end of Glendale is everyone's on like light timers and they, it, it's so dark, sometimes you're like, what in the world, it's, you can't even see. But a hospital in that location will forever, I mean, it'll just change it dramatically, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, uh Lauren, next slide. Okay, Sally, do you wanna address any of these?
Okay, so um we wanna advocate for improvements in the quality of life in the area. Some of them you're doing or have done and will continue to do. For example, pollinator meadows, uh replacement of Sunny Ridge Park sign, that's something that was vandalized recent, recently.
Was started on fire for some reason.
They, they got fired.
So we're hoping to see that.
Yeah, people know that song, you said on fire?
Yep.
Yep.
And uh we are hoping to diminish residential lighting by um encouraging folks to put on sensor lights so that we can help our birds uh migrate.
How, how do you do that? Do you do door knockers? How do you communicate with them?
Well, the ten list is one of the channels, because everybody who lives near T-Town or the T-Town area, there's the ten Google list, and I, it's literally everyone in the entire community. So that's, there's a lot of exchange of information, I'm, some of you may be on the ten list, sometimes it's just.
You have to live next to T-Town to be on it.
Right.
But the thing about the diminished uh residential lighting is I've also talked with, briefly with the Sustainability Board about that, so that might be something that we could coordinate in terms of how do you address it. And the, and the, um, and the other thing, and I had written to the planning board about this a long time ago, um before we were even rekindled as a board, uh about the green buildings, um and whether that, whether that included the um window glass that was bird safe. I don't know if anybody knows about that, but both the lighting and the um, it's like Flacco, the owl, it just, yeah, went into a window.
But.
So, and in fact, there are, there are laws in New York City that, you know, buildings above a s- floors above a certain height have to have this uh bird protective um glass in it, it's like something that.
They also found rat poisoning in his blood.
What?
They also found high levels of rat poisoning.
In Flacco?
Yeah.
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 He was eating the money.
But to.
It was dinner, so.
But Vicki, to answer your question, if, like, to give specific example, it's kind of
It was a sad episode, but.
in the West End, the neighbors talking to other neighbors, so it's all voluntary.
Yeah, okay.
But I've known specific circumstances where like someone moved in, they're new to town, they wanna light up their whole property, they do, and then inevitably, over time, as.
We're running out, we're running fifteen minutes.
Okay, they'll, they'll change and turn their lights off.
Yeah, and so just, uh, so you know, our town board meeting is at seven and we have two other presentations, so
Okay.
this is all important stuff, I don't wanna rush, but we're gonna have to agree to this.
Yeah, let's finish.
Very quickly, okay, so I think many of you know, we requested, uh re- remember we're on, on improvements in quality of life, so the uh backboard for the tennis court, which has been requested for a long time.
No, I think that's coming.
Yeah, coming.
Oh, it is?
Coming, yeah, that's coming.
Well, we don't even know.
Yeah, that's coming.
My day.
Pickleball nets, pickleball, it's, it's coming.
You ask, you ask, we, we, we will deliver.
Yep.
It's gonna be done this year.
You talk about art sculpture and murals, cuz I really wanna hear about that.
Okay, the expert on that couldn't come here tonight, but I wanted to give credit to the chief for the road calming. That was our, one of our first initiatives when we were rekindled and um number of the roads that were considered unsafe. Put up signs and the monitors and everything, so thank you for that.
You know, and I'm going to suggest there are some really interesting initiatives here, and to the extent that they coincide with, I, I know you're working on the arts, can you connect with one another and go over it in detail?
Yeah.
Yep.
Can you tell your email address?
Um, okay, so I'm just gonna say two things, alright, and then we'll do, we'll get together.
You can send it later. Yep.
One of them has to do with the cell phone tower in West End, I know the town did the survey.
Yep.
Do you want a cell phone tower?
I asked that to David yesterday who lives in the West End, I said, before I put this on here, do people in the West End want a tower? And what was your answer?
Look, for. For the, the, absolutely, look, for the, those people who live on Glendale or even T, literally, there's no phone service. Like, you can't call the police, you can't get the fire, it's, there's, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on there, it's on there.
So that's a, yes.
Okay, and the last thing is that, um.
So we, we do have an intern working on that, trying to, to um coordinate the um, the layers of uh gaps in cell service along with um property ownership, so we can see whether or not there are appropriate pa- um parcels for us to be able to approach property owners and then uh cell to, cell phone tower operators to be able to link the two, so that's coming. We have an intern, let me working on it.
Great.
Um and then the last thing was the paving of Crotton Dam Road in the town of Newcastle. Originally, it was, the Crotton Dam Road is only gonna be paved from Route one hundred to the, to Conic, which is all in the town of Yorktown. So I, I asked Chris Berdick about it, and he said, oh, well, we didn't know Newcastle wanted that paved. So we are now in the books to have the Newcastle portion of Crotton Dam Road paved.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a major thing, from Grace Lane all the way to, all the way, it's huge.
Thank you.
Okay, and last slide, um I think you ha- you have this in your packets, it will be available to you, we're not gonna go into the details, but these are like big, major projects that I will be long gone when they come to fruition, but that makes me talk about.
Hope not. Hope not. Um is the presentation in our packets, Jill, like, don't, I don't see, can you send it, um Nicole, just send it electronically?
I didn't see it.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This one, yeah, we, we have it now, so we'll be able to, to forward it to the board.
After your presentation.
Yeah.
Okay, just send it, send it to us, okay, great.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you again for inviting us, I know it was a lot.
Great. Thank you so much, and I know that there's a lot to talk about, so there's more and we can talk offline and um
Yep.
but we really appreciate this overview of everything you've been doing, it's really tremendous, tremendous effort. Really appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good talking to you.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you so much.
No, not at all, yeah.
Be interesting. So the next thing on our agenda is a draft of a law to raise the fine for noise violations to the neighbors?
Okay. Yeah.
Why are we raising?
Yes.
From two fifty to five hundred?
Five hundred.
SAP had requested even.
Ever too.
I think that's a little high.
Yeah.
I think five hundred's a little high.
It, this was a request, um.
Well, it's currently two hundred and fifty dollars.
Up to two fifty, but the judge has discretion, five hundred, I mean.
It's a request by um SAP, the Sustainability Advisory Board.
I still think it's high.
I, I don't know.
I know that, I understand that's their request, but I think five is high.
I don't know that um we've adopted the other measures, like have we put door knockers, have we gone to neighborhoods?
We haven't because we're waiting for them to prevent us with door hangers.
Now, we talked about this already, we talked about doing the door knockers first, doing an outreach, communicating, and then
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
later on, um escal- perhaps escalating, so I, while I appreciate that we put this on the agenda,
If we still feel like this is a problem.
I feel that we haven't really done what, what we committed to do.
We're leapfrogging.
It's premature.
Yes, I agree. Can I, can I ask a question first? I, how many times has anyone been fined?
Yes.
For this anyways?
I think zero.
Zero.
Yeah, I, I think it's, the issue was first enforcement, and, and I know initially you wanted to do just more and get people to understand what the county can't do.
Education first.
And then there's an issue of people actually witnessing it, or the officers witnessing it, so there's been issues that are, you can explain that, but five hundred, I think it's a jump.
So there, there's a gradation of consequences and an escalation, I think we're still at the floor.
Correct. Correct.
Um Holly, you're the liaison to SAP, could you go back and discuss this with them about the, you know, incremental
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
enforcement, well, first with communication, because we haven't had that piece, yeah.
All right, if I could add, we received nineteen total complaints last year.
Okay.
Okay.
And Tom's, Tom Dupole's here to speak with us, uh we've had a public hearing a little bit, but um Tom's here as well?
Okay.
Good evening.
You can, you wanna come join us?
Yeah, but, but, well, considering though, considering that we're running very late and there are people here who are, you know, from sustainable Westchester
Yeah, come and see.
waiting, hello, um
Yeah.
You know, we basically understand what they're, what they want, I mean, they're impatient, we're, you know, we would love for people to comply. But I, I just think we need the communication piece first.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I think there, it's premature to consider increasing the fine because we don't know that the two hundred and fifty is not effective yet.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, that's not the issue.
Right, right.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Good, so we're gonna table that.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
And the next is um, uh just a, uh informal discussion about just uh school. And the next is um uh just a uh informal discussion about just uh school resocial officer costs.
Right, so I just wanna put this into context, um so the reason we're discussing SRO costs is um I mean, it would not be my preference to discuss something on the school budget at at the eleventh hour, that's not usually what we do. But um people have been asking about the SRO costs and why they're structured the way they are and they've been asking the school board members and the school board president who has sent um the people to us, I guess basically to me and I've got a whole slew of questions in the past few days, so I felt it was important to just put it on the public agenda so that everyone could have answers in public at the same time, so we could really explain it. Um you know, these are our costs, but ultimately, these are numbers for the school district and we're not opining on on their budget or whether they should or should not have SROs, that is a school district school board, I should say school board decision, but we're trying to be helpful since they've sent people to us, so we are going to explain as best we can why it's been structured financially the way it has. So Rob um created a mini spreadsheet here and we're going to go through it.
Sure, so um what I projected here are just the uh the total cost that the town would incur for hiring one of these officers, um and the cost for the salary and the benefits alone for the officer, so um for each officer, we've assumed the salary of a P O one, anything in black is our cost that we know. Uh so the PBA contract runs through twenty twenty seven, so we have the um exact amounts for that patrol officer's salary. If I can Medicare share, that's a the set number, so we know that exactly. Uh retirement contribution, we do have those numbers for a two-year period from the state. Um going to the next two years, we project that out with a a small escalator. We rarely have seen retirement costs of the town go down, they typically go up one or two percent each year. Uh the next line down is the health benefits, uh the town share of health benefits for an officer. Um that's contractual as well, typically uh police officers, police officer will contribute about fifteen percent of the total benefits, uh the total cost of the uh premium and the town picks up the rest. And then the next is the workers' compensation, so you see over a period of four years, that's the total cost for the town. Uh begins just south of two hundred thousand and escalates up to about uh two hundred and nineteen thousand by the end of the four-year period.
Okay, um thank you, Rob, one of the questions we've received is why there's a differential in in costs or cost to the school district um between the first contract with Michelle at the high school and the second contract with the two other SROs that are being shared by the middle schools and elementary schools, and so could you talk a little bit about that?
Sure, I mean, there are two separate contracts that cover the three officers right now, the the first one for Michelle um and that started, was it two thousand nineteen? Okay, so uh in the beginning, we started with one officer, um took a while to get that agreement settled, it was about a year. Um we absorbed a lot of the cost of that in the beginning just to get the officer in place, but the situation with Michelle was different than anything going forward, we had the officer on staff, we didn't have to backfill, we didn't have to replace the position. We were able to kinda reassign her to the school and you know, that allowed us, we we did wanna get a share from the school, some contribution. Um a- again, it was a negotiated number, we shared some of our costs with the school and and um that was the number we arrived at back then. Um.
Right, but the the um the relevant point is that we didn't have to hire a new officer for that.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
And also, we weren't sure and the school wasn't sure whether this program would be, you know, would be desirable or successful.
Successful, correct.
This is actually the second contract for that, because we did start with a couple short-term contracts in in
And so that, you know, so.
in case either side wasn't interested in continuing the program. Um we've gone the other way, instead of discontinuing the program, we're now looking to add several more officers.
Right, so the circumstances surrounding surrounding each contract were very different.
Yes, absolutely.
That's the point, right? Okay.
Yeah, so the the second contract uh came about last year, I think the school district had already adopted their budget and then um due to I guess sentiment throughout the town that that they really wanted to see officers in more of the schools and and that was an agreement then we reached last year with the town board at the time in the school district. Um I think when we went into the meeting, we were pretty far apart, the the school district was hoping we would absorb all of the costs of a new officer and we were hoping they would pay all of the costs for a new officer, so um again, through process of negotiation, we arrived at a number that was um a greater portion of uh the school would accept a greater portion of that um than in the prior contract, now, we did in an effort to to be accommodating to the school with the understanding they hadn't anticipated it in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we did leave the cost for that first year uh the same as the prior contract with Michelle and that was about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So the second year then of that contract goes up to about a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Um yeah, and we were being accommodated accommodating, um so you know, in terms of they're asking for the town to pay hundred percent of the cost, some some municipalities do that, for instance, I believe Austin does.
No.
But if you think about it, Austining, the town of Austining only has the Austining School District within its town borders, whereas the town of Newcastle has a total of six school districts within it, the majority is CCSD, but we also have residents from school districts of Austining, Bedford, Yorktown, Byram Hills and one parcel in Pleasantville include, you know, on top of CCSD, so we have to be mindful of the balance between the town benefiting from more officers and the more officers we have that we wouldn't otherwise hire um the more diminishing returns we have for those officers, and so so although there is a benefit we have to consider our residents who are in different school districts.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right.
I'll I'll point out, there's some other costs that we didn't show here, but there are some kind of fixed costs that go into it, th- these are the personnel costs for an officer. But when we hire one, we have to outfit them and there's a cost of about seven thousand dollars to outfit them, they need bulletproof vests, they need weapon, they need uniforms, et cetera. Um and unfortunately, we didn't have the cars uh at the time or we we haven't over the last couple of years, we're finally getting some of the vehicles we ordered in two thousand twenty-two, finally getting those in uh after COVID, there were significant supply chain uh problems getting these vehicles, but um we didn't have all these vehicles around, um as Chief mentioned uh a little bit earlier when we were talking. There's anywhere between three and six cars out on the road at any one time, usually three or four, but you know, that encompasses most of our fleet to do that, so in order to have vehicles for these officers to have to drive to the school, and I think in the original contract at the school's request, they wanted a police vehicle in front of the school. So um in order to accommodate that, we do have to increase our fleet.
And the uniform and equipment fees, tho- those one-time costs, those are being paid by the town.
Mm-hmm. Being paid by the town, correct.
So Chief, my understanding is that your department needs more or less thirty-seven officers.
Yes, we can run on thirty-seven.
You can run on thirty-seven, so we had thirty-seven with the first SRO with Michelle.
With that SRO program. Yes.
And we now have thirty-nine?
We have forty, so I guess it's thirty-eight, yeah, so eventually, when we had a contract with CCSD, we had an officer.
Okay.
Right, so we went to thirty-eight and then we added two more with the next.
Two more.
And if if the budget passes, we're looking at three more, so I guess thirty, thirty-seven.
So let's say you need thirty-seven, thirty-eight and we're going to, if we have the three more, we'll end up with um.
Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay. And that would be a real commitment to the town, so if the school were to decide that they didn't want all of those SROs in in the near future, we would have to maintain those officers as employees.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Through attrition.
Yeah, I just want people to understand and may and maybe through attrition, we would get back down to a number, but we would have
Yes, yes. Through through attrition.
employees here for for some time.
Quite possibly, yes.
So that is that is a risk, um. Any, does anyone have any other clarifying questions?
I think Chief answered the issue about whether or not we need those officers in terms of satisfying the needs of the municipality
Right.
and you have, we certainly have enough now, but the question then becomes, as you just mentioned, if we have more, what there is a a benefit still to the town, um there's still a benefit, it it to your point, diminishing returns at some point. Um and I don't know if you you mentioned, but i- if this does all go through, the some of the protection we would have would be to stagger the potential dates to release those officers, so in other words, it couldn't just all happen at once where the school district would say, we don't want it anymore. Now you're stuck with ex- all these officers, it would have to be staggered to protect us at least in part.
We could work that out, hopefully, right, um another factor we didn't discuss is the number of days
Right.
that these officers would work, they would work hundred and eighty-five days for the school district.
Right.
Um so just so people know, it's not like they work three hundred and and sixty days, so could you explain the number of days that that would be left on balance?
Yeah, sure, the the current PBA contract allows for an officer to work two hundred and twenty-seven days. Uh they're eight-hour, twenty-five-minute shifts and that that's part of that is for overlap, so no area in town um doesn't ever have an officer. First fifteen minutes of their tour is a muster, you see it all the time where the sergeant comes up and talks about what's going on and make assignments. Last ten ten minutes, they're finishing up reports, so it's twenty, two hundred and twenty-seven days. Minus the one eighty-five that they're assigned to the school, brings us down to forty-two days, now, a senior officer would has uh twenty-four vacation days and you know, five personal days, total twenty-nine, which brings us to thirteen days that the town would have the officer on the road, you know, thirteen, I I I think fifteen's a better number, if they take a couple of personnel days during the year, um you know, goes to fifteen, you know, Michelle, well, one of the officers took, you know, vacation, so she'll be working nineteen days over the summer, so but I think fifteen is a good hard and fast number for us to go by, and if it's six of them, there's ninety extra days over the summer, which you know increases patrol for the town, helps offset some overtime.
Right.
Yes, I think people people would be um really surprised to hear, so basically, on average, they have fifteen working days left
We're able to leverage that.
Correct.
for the town to use, so that's really something to to consider.
And that you said that would offset some of the overtime costs or additional costs, okay, that's helpful.
Yeah. Okay. Um I suppose that's it, Rob, you'll be here for the balance of the meeting, we might you might get questions during public comment session, Chief, I don't know that
Sure.
Yep.
you necessarily have to say, although if you really want to.
I think I'll say just in case something comes up in public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that does it for our work session.
We just have administrative items, does anyone have any questions on them?
Okay.
I don't.
Okay, the only thing I just wanted to mention to the board is we're actually um tabling the authorization to purchase the cameras for town hall in the train station. We're waiting for the um proper uh contract to come through.
Right.
Um.
Okay.
So move to adjourn.
No, we're we're.
We are.
The local authorization, instead of public hearing, and the local, well, we're not gonna.
We're crossing that up, we're wanting to remove that from our consent agenda.
That we're. Yeah, we're, I'm sorry, yes, yeah. Oh, that's consent, yeah, I haven't got that yet.
Yeah. Um let's see what else.
Yeah, so just the administrative items.
Okay, so we have a motion to close the work session and enter into the town board's agenda.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we've already opened up our town board meeting, but I wanna welcome everyone again, we have a very special event going on here, we wanna welcome uh some of our really athletes for incredible accomplishments. We wanna welcome our track team and boys' track team and boys' swim team. And uh first, I just wanna let you know how proud we are of you, not just for your wins and your medals, but for what you exemplified to the whole community and to your fellow um students, you show strength of character leadership, perseverance and resilience and all of the amazing things you learn in what we call uh classrooms without walls, so I just wanna congratulate you and um so these are New York State championship winners, you've won a record number of medals for swim and dive and indoor track, you've won seven state titles. And so what I'd like to do is invite each of you one at a time and then we'll end up taking a picture with the town board. So first, we'll start with the track team, um you've won and you can correct me if I've I've got any of this wrong, but you've won medals in four of six events, two state championship titles, two bronze medals, you've made some personal records uh including one by the fastest freshman in New York State, am I got that right? Alright, so first I wanna welcome up, and not everyone could be here, um Ben Ho state champion for the four-by-two-hundred relay, Ben Ho. Um and Kyle McKenny for the same, uh one of our home, that's been in the sessions. Um Will Weiss, come on up. Uh we've got three with spin, I'm not sure you could be here today, Nico Wright, not sure. Right here, oh yeah, great. Mm-hmm, and um and I wanna congratulate Coach Steve McKenny, is is the coach here?
I am here, yeah.
Alright, welcome up, welcome up. Okay, am I missing anyone from class?
I think these are good meditations.
Is this it? Okay, and I'd like to go to the boys' swim team, so Horace Really was recognized as the highest scoring school in the swim-dive state championships. They took home four state championship titles, set new state meet and federation records. And um I wanna congratulate Coaches Meg Kaplan and Jeanne Calacan, who needed apparently a hand truck to get a box of medals out of the building, so um so I'd like to welcome Jack Cornish, I'm not sure he could make it today, Eric Engel. Oliver L. Smith. LJ Goulada. Connor McHugh. Eric Natticane. Jonas Baxetic. David Holmes. And Adam Kamal. And Coaches Kaplan and Calacan. Come on up, okay, so we're gonna take a picture with the board.
So I'd like to. I'd like to invite the board, come on up.
At zero, it's here.
Well, I think we'll have to stuck proud in a bit.
I don't know, I'm sure.
Just taking.
Nobody move, nobody move.
It's always perfect when you go to short.
Congratulations.
Love one.
Hi. Okay.
Good job.
Alright. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Senior, if you're part of the academics, um I have all the applications, I need your signature and your permission, okay?
Jamie, come on, hang on a second. Um hang on, Jamie.
And uh I just wanna say one more thing, I didn't know he was here, but I I just wanted to congratulate your athletics director, Jamie Brock. You know.
Sorry, Jamie, I asked if you were.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
My approach to bench, my approach to bench.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Jeremy, I'm gonna have a little bite.
Yeah, Christine.
I guess that was the exciting part, it was mine.
That was, yeah, I know.
Are we ready, ready, Jamie?
Ready.
Okay, so at this time, we're going to we'll hold off on the announcements, Joe will just go right to Sustainable Westchester, we have, we're going to have um I guess a sort of presentation or talk with Dan Welsh, Program Director of Sustainable Westchester who's here to talk about the program and the rates and what we can expect currently that that has been going on
Please do that.
in the energy sector.
Dave, um so Rob, how did you do that before, he's he's got a um a thumb drive?
Uh, my computer's dying, I'm not sure if they can.
Can, can you use dance or? Wait one second. I just wondering, maybe you want the lecture, um, so you can just. Can. They. A thumb drive?
Yeah.
Some music on my phone.
Thanks, Jamie.
Is the only, is the only pile up?
Um, Dan, do you want a lecture and go for your computer?
I should do, um.
Well, I'm gonna be able to see that up there.
Yeah, you're gonna be upstairs, yeah.
No, public comment comes after this.
Yeah, wait a second, it will come around.
It comes after this, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, welcome, Dan, thank you for coming.
Sure, thanks for inviting.
I will, uh, give you the floor. Well, you know, we're here because there've been some, you know, challenges with the, with the rates, with the consortium. And, um, so we, we, we just thought we would have here so you could talk to us in the community about that and, um,
Yes, yes.
what you can tell us for, for going forward.
Glad to have you up today. Okay, and I'm here with my colleague, Angelina Connor.
Hi, Angelina.
Your colleague. So, great, so everybody can see this, so, uh, thanks for inviting us here for the, for an update. And, um, it's great to have the chance to speak to all of our folks. Next slide.
Can you maybe move the mic up a little bit? Thank you.
My name is Rockstar.
You can sing to us as you go through, we'd love that.
So, so, uh, just for the folks who aren't familiar, Sustainable Westchester is an intermunicipal consortium. It's a, uh, all municipalities, cities, villages and towns of Westchester come together, create a shared service to build programming and initiatives to help the municipalities do things in the sustainability area, environmental area that they would have to accomplish doing themselves. Very heavy emphasis on energy, electrification of buildings and certain specialty programs and group awards. And, uh, of course, some recycling stuff, next, next slide. And, uh, but it's also about innovations and things that, again, we couldn't do just on our own. So the consortium itself was actually the first of its type in the state where all the municipalities in Canada come together and create this shared service. The, the program that we're gonna talk about, the Community Choice Aggregation, that's Westchester Power, was also the first of its kind in New York, there's now dozens of them around the state. We have the first residential demand response program in New York State. That's also an innovation that happened only because we were aggregated together as, uh, as a collective. Uh, we have, uh, cutting edge innovations like you can find over on our, on the headquarters in Mount Kisco, which is this solar to, uh, EV charging, fast, fast charging with battery storage, which helps to mitigate the, the stress on the grid, but also throws off, um, uh, solar credit discounts for, for, um, uh, local, low income customers. And recently, we've been recognized by the federal government as one of the awardees for their nationwide, um, uh, project to de-decarbonize, uh, um, non, nonprofit buildings. Much, much more, the, the original solarized program is instituted by Sustainable Westchester. It's also copied basically around the state, center to center. So this is what coming together allows us to do. Thanks, next slide. So onto Westchester Power and, uh, the folks in Newcastle are one of twenty-nine municipalities participating in this, the first and largest aggregation of residential, um, electricity supply in New York State. Next slide. And, uh, just to summarize, the contract currently as it stands, uh, the supplier's Constellation, a huge energy company, you know, nationwide company. The current rates for the hundred percent renewable, which is the default product for the, for the, uh, Canada territory, is about fifteen and a half cents. The standard supply, which is basic grid, non-renewable grid supply, is thirteen point six and change. And this current contract goes from November first, uh, twenty twenty-two through the end of October of this year. Next slide, please. So the rates, as you say, are what, what is, everybody's paying attention to now. There, nobody's really happy with the, where the contract sits relative to Canada today. Um, put together this chart, this was actually, uh, it was City Riot actually asked us to do this, just to give the, the overall context over the years, because you can get focused on a, a given point in time and not necessarily sort of see the whole, the whole picture. We actually took the averages for each year, just to be able to eyeball those. And you can see that we're, uh, behind sometimes, we're ahead sometimes. Uh, this particular contract is, is particularly painful for us, but we've been in good shape. There's just the past contract, we were ahead. And, um, overall, if you look all the way back through two thousand sixteen, just on a simple average, the, the renewable product ends up costing us, having a premium of about a penny a kilowatt hour. The standard product has been a little less than half a cent more than the, than the, um, utility supply. Uh, but there's typically, uh, for a fixed product, there's often.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, what, what is that?
Yeah.
What does that mean to the, to the such as an average consumer? You know, what, what is a house, you know, uh, let's say twenty-five hundred square foot house, four thousand square foot house.
Average, uh, consumer in sort of northern Westchesterish is something over a thousand kilowatt hours, maybe eleven hundred, twelve hundred. So if you're off by a penny, um, ten bucks on per month, that's per month.
It, it is that. And, 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 per month, and that's for, uh, but a fam- is it, is it just by a unit meaning a house? Or is that including an apartment, does that include, is that a five family, five?
That's, that's, you know, northern Westchester tends to be, uh, single family home, you know. If you go down southern Westchester, uh, the average is closer to five or six hundred, you know, so.
Thank you.
Um, next slide, please. We think this, uh, context is also important because it's apples to apples. Uh, so if you go out and you try to get renewable power yourself, you're gonna go to one of the energy service companies that supplies that. And we, we pull the rates off of the, the, uh, ones that you see most often out there. And this is the range of rates that we've seen over the time that we've started collecting them. And the, the Sustainable Westchester rate is consistently at the lower end of all those. Sometimes they're below us, sometimes not quite, but even, and, uh, it's also, uh, you know, should be recognized that in any given month, as you move forward and, and you're newly contracting the NESCO, the market may have changed. But even with that, um, we, we've been in a good place relative to comparable products. Next slide, please. And this is just to, um, give us again some more context, uh, how did we get where we got to? This was, the current contract was, uh, the, the product of a bidding exercise that went on in, uh, twenty twenty-two. And, um, in the fall of twenty twenty-two, the energy markets were melting down. We were seeing that, uh, the war in Ukraine was causing, because of the cutoff of gas to Europe, there was, uh, panic about the, you know, people in Europe were gonna start freezing because there wasn't a gas. It was pulling exports from the US over to European markets where the price for natural gas, and we care about natural gas because it's the primary, um, price driver in the electricity market. So the rates for natural gas over in Europe, like ten times what they are here, so there's arbitrage going on. So we're looking at this and this is the market we were sitting in at, at the time. Next slide. And then the second, so, the, even, even with all that, and the war is still continuing as if it would never end and, and the, um, gas still cut off from Europe, uh, the, everybody just decided, well, I guess it's not a, a big deal. Um, and, um, of course, temperatures were very mild through the winter and, so, so the market turned around. Um, next, next slide. Um, back up to, to sort of the principal level, just remembering, the, the program is, is focused on, uh, helping us all move the needle on renewable energy, increasing the uptake on renewable energy. But doing it in as economically efficient a way as we possibly can does provide some value around capping costs because at least you know what your price is going to be. You don't know what the utility price is gonna be until you've already used that electricity in, in a variable rate. So you essentially have, uh, an opportunity to capture costs and never pay more than what the, the, um, uh, program price is. And it's also one more choice that you've never had, because you can always switch back and forth if you want. You can switch back to Canada, you can switch to another NESCO. So, so it's, these are kind of the three, uh, pillars of the program. Next, next slide. On the clean energy side, uh, that success has been clear and unmitigated. The, uh, amount of CO2 that we've, uh, that we've managed to mitigate is, uh, is tremendous, equivalent of sixty thousand cars taken off the road annually. And it's the single most impactful thing that any municipality can, can do at this point to, uh, lighten their, their, uh, carbon footprint. Next slide. And we don't have to do a whole thing on climate change, but anybody who's been watching the news, I mean, have noticed that, that some of the reports are getting, uh, more and more dire. Uh, UN reports that things are moving faster than ever. Of course, we had the wildfires last year and, uh, the, the, uh, the reassessment of methane emissions, et cetera, et cetera. So it re- remains a critical problem and important for us to work on. Next slide. Next slide, please, yeah. And again, not to dwell on it, but there's also, uh, an important adjunct to the environmental issue is the environmental justice issue, since these, uh, the environmental degradation and the problems that are associated, whether it hit the most vulnerable hardest, whether it be financially, health risks to fo- folks who have pre-existing conditions, et cetera, et cetera. Next slide. Again, on the, on the sort of economic efficiency, uh, this, I think this point is clear. Uh, you know, the, the, um, utilities rates are, are variable, unpredictable, and at least with the program, you know where you're gonna be. Next slide. And again, this just to illustrate the, the fact that with the program, uh, you, you have an additional choice that you, you didn't have. So prior to Westchester Power, uh, being instituted, you were either with the utility or you had to go out on your own and seek, uh, supply options from, uh, from private Esco. So now with, uh, Westchester Power, the default changes, so Westchester Power, but you still have the, the same options that you had, uh, aside from that. Next slide. Uh, other ancillary benefits are, are noticeable. Uh, in particular, the program is great as far as, um, pumping up local, uh, excitement about, you know, the next, the next best project for sustainability. The, the nice sort of clean energy communities program has just refreshed their grant, uh, offerings and the dollar values have gone up tremendously. So it's a great opportunity to, uh, pick up some, some funds to, to bolster your sustainability programming. And the CCA is the, you know, Westchester Power is the highest earning point designation for that program. Next slide. Uh, it's also a platform for the things we still want to do. We, uh, have, for example, put in a, uh, proposal to the state for opt-out community solar, which would say we could, uh, distribute these solar discount credits, uh, that are associated with new solar farms on an opt-out basis, just as we, uh, operate the, the, uh, Westchester Power Supply Program. So you don't have to go through that one by one sign up and, and for the developers, and it's more attractive because they know their project's gonna be signed up. Uh, but that proposal's been sitting there for almost two years now. And we're, we're, we're just making a new, uh, I don't know, sort of refresh of that proposal just today, it just came out. So we're hoping we get a breakthrough on that. We would focus initially on, on low income customers, you know, because the, that program would really depend on the phase-wise building of new, uh, renewable facilities and we would want to prioritize the low income customers, but eventually, uh, make it accessible to all. And then beyond that, we hope to leverage the, the supply program to really drive new, uh, new construction by potentially setting up structures where we could contract, take our contract to load and say, you build that wind farm for us, we want to connect to that. And then, of course, it serves as a cornerstone for all the rest of the programming. If you're talking about building and electrification, um, it makes more sense when you have green energy supply, because that means you're zeroing out the whole, the whole building energy. Next, next slide. Uh, and just looking forward to what we need to do this year. Again, the contract for the Canada territory is up at the end of October. And, uh, we want to get started early this year, you know, usually we're sort of, uh, compliance based in terms of our timing. We want to get a little more time upfront so that we, we can deliberate, we can explore potential modifications to our procurement process, make sure that we're flushing as many potential suppliers as we can out of the, out of the, uh, the market. And we're, we're talking to the Department of Public Service about certain ideas we have about, uh, modifying procurement, maybe stretching it out so it's not just a one day, uh, affair, so that you s- split it up and you're not, you're not sort of point in time purchasing, different ideas like that. Um, but we want to get there okay ahead of time. If, for us, if we look at the, the regulations, we think that's fine, but it's up to them to say, yes, it's fine or not. So doing that, we're also, uh, sending out RFIs, uh, requests for information to suppliers, trying to have more dialogue with them.
Can I ask you a question, because I don't want to forget as you, as you go on?
Yeah.
If you had, had the opportunity to do that within this contract, do you think that the rates would have been lower? Would that have made a significant difference?
It, it should have.
Be staggered.
It should have, if, well, one, I should say, if we would get the second of our ideas, which is to perhaps go to a shorter term contract, or maybe a contract with a, sort of an umbrella, two years, but adjusting every six months rather than just locking in for, for two years. Because, you know, you can do, the market may look at the hedges and forwards at this point in time and say it's gonna be here, but things change. And, you know, if we have the ability to move a little bit with the market, that, that would help too. So these are the things that we're, we're exploring with them, they're all about.
Or, or could it hurt depending?
Right, right. Could go the other way.
Yeah, of, of course, the, the ability to adjust also means that you, you could move up to.
Yeah. It becomes variable at some point.
Right.
So, so our thought is, um, to stay away from fully variable, because there's no particular value there. But if we go to a shorter term, you still have the benefits of, you know, you know, stability at that level. And people, and you still know what your rate is gonna be ahead of time, so that's an advantage, you know, in deciding where you want to be versus utility, where again, you don't know until your bill comes what the, what the kilowatt hour rate is, you know. Uh, we also look at that, these, as a possibility for, uh, building new structures, kind of breaking open the rate a little more in terms of what's under the hood, uh, in anticipation of future innovation. So that's one thing that's going on. The, the other thing, the top item there is important though. Right now, the market is so tight that in our other two contracts that we signed last fall, we had to go to a fifty percent renewable default because the demand for renewables has gone up. The renew, the supply in the so-called voluntary market is constrained. And so we weren't able to get, get a fully renewable product. Uh, you have to be fifty percent renewable in New York State in order to call your product renewable, um, under the, the regulation. So that's kind of the, the mark there. The state, the DPS, is trying to open up that market by making new classes of renewables, uh, available on the voluntary market. So we expect it to open up, but we think, we think that this, uh, renewable this time in the fall, we're probably gonna be in a position where we, we have to settle for fifty percent temporarily for this next contract. So those are things that are happening. We do hope, as I said, to accelerate this process and, and get some feedback. We actually have a meeting with the DPS on the fifth. So we hope to get feedback there, a little more feedback from the suppliers, uh, consolidate that and then start to come out to the municipalities with, like, this is the way we, we want to program out the, the discussions for the next contract.
Okay. Any, any ideas on what the range might be for the next one?
Um, the, the, gas, gas, well, yeah, I've, I could pull an actual number, but gas prices have gone, uh, to historic lows. It's crazy, so that's another reason to maybe try to move more quickly than, than we normally would. Because it can't stay that way. Because it can't stay that way, you know? So if we can get clarifications in early April and get organized, it would be great if we could get to bid by ear- early May, you know, to try to handle.
Then you'd be locked in.
Yeah, and electricity prices tend to lag the gas drop a little bit. So, you know, timing-wise, it's it's better to go out early. So we'll see whether we're just trying to sort of beat that market or we also have the ability to add in some of these other features and, you know, optimize uh our what we're going out with.
Okay. All right, so this.
I think that might be it. I'm not sure, but yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Yes, it is. Good. Good.
All right. Well, this happens to be a particularly difficult period, so.
For sure. We we've not.
And our our residents know, and hopefully we'll let them know, they can opt out. They're not they're not locked in. There is that option.
Absolutely.
And this happens to be one of the most impactful ways of addressing uh climate change and greenhouse gases. So um I I would certainly, you know, there are ups and downs here, but I would
Hope people will consider this. Yeah.
certainly like to to stay with the program. Um I mean, we weren't, I don't know if we were contemplating the question, but I I would just wanna state that, um, you know.
Sure, I appreciate that.
Certainly still in in favor of it, although we're going through particularly difficult period. But we see a light at the end of the tunnel and hopefully some savings in the next next contract.
I would retain one who's who feels uncomfortable, you know, with where they are right now. We're happy to opt them out. Anybody else, you know, is it is annoying right now? We hope other people can can stick with it and and help continue to, you know, uh achieve the mission.
Can I ask a, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Would you? You go ahead.
I just kind of a technical question about um opting out. If you opt out, you cannot opt back in, you're already out.
Oh, you can.
Oh, you can. So you're not opted out for the duration of the contract.
Yeah. No, now, if you opt out and you don't, you have to opt back in yourself proactively. We will not then include you in the next mailing. That's just, that's what the the PSC wants us to do. And, you know, there's pros and cons either way, but that's so that so you have to come back to us. And then, you know, it's not instantaneous, because you only switch on meter read dates on your, you know, on your bill cycle date. So, you know, if you're, if you do a transaction, you know, just one day before the cycle date, chances are it won't get processed. You'll be, you know, starting that, whatever that is, the next cycle, such thing.
But so in reality, we actually have a lot of flexibility with with the program as an individual consumer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's uh a critical feature of the program is is those consumer-friendly features.
Thank you.
Dan has done an amazing job of making himself available to any resident. Um I call him on a regular basis.
Okay.
Vivat Acosta is here as well from SAB. He has been amazing in um, you know, outreach to the community and really helpful to residents. So if anybody has any problems getting through, sometimes Dan's a popular guy.
Yeah.
You can't get him first time around, try again. Um but, you know, if anybody's having problems, they should reach out to the board, reach out to me. Um we're happy to connect to, um answer any questions you have. But everybody should be really clear that all residents have an unfettered ability to opt out at any point in time.
We chose specifically, if I recall, years ago, to make it opt out as opposed to opt in because we believe in this in in you. Well, you personally, you're standing here now, but but we believe in the collective you and and the town.
The royal you.
Fairly about extremely serious about trying to do what they can or we can for these issues. So as long as residents are educated, that they have that option, I think it stays and there's no reason to change.
Yeah, so we appreciate also, you know, any efforts that the town uh can make to to continue to put out the, you know, information about the program on your websites and Facebook pages and such. So, of course.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you. So much.
Oh, thank you for taking the time to come here, Dan. Really, really appreciate it.
I think it's my fun to add.
Thank you. Is there someone else who wants to come in? Yes. Sure.
Can I add a couple of thoughts? Uh Daniel Tola.
Good night, Mr. Tola.
That's all right. Um just just a few things. Uh you asked about the impact of the uh um the the cost differential.
Yeah.
Oh, an easy way to think about it is is that piece is about half your bill. The other half is 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 flat whether you're part of uh Westchester Power or not. So and there's a one-third differential in price, so it's about one-sixth difference in your bill, um if you were with Con Ed on average or not. So it, yes, some people that that can break the bank, but but uh that's uh. Second thing is, to your point, it's an opt-out uh program. And so uh if you look at the numbers, our residents have generally not voted for that fee. There's about uh eight percent to eleven percent typically uh month-to-month of of how many of our uh residents are in the program uh compared to the the beginning of this contract. So we were, we've lost about eight to ten, eight to ten, eight to eleven percent of our residents over over the last two years. Uh and and that number goes back up and down. Um next month, I think it's gonna come back down again um from that percentage. Uh third thing, um we talked about the the uh uh climate impact of this. In twenty eleven, we uh as a town, we had like a climate uh, I forget the exact term, but some kind of a a a climate roadmap.
Right.
And there was a sixty thousand tons of CO2 reduction that we were targeting. This program is about one-fourth of that just by itself, right? So so it's really important from from a from a greenhouse gas mitigation perspective. So given that, the fifty percent renewable uh standard uh going forward is gonna be, is gonna hurt those numbers. Uh one of the things that I that that I always tell people that 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 are having difficulty with their with their bills is the number one thing you can do is call and opt out. That's that's easy. But two, if you wanna decrease your bills even further, put solar on your roofs. Um not all our roofs are are suitable for solar, but but more and more of them are. I mean, panels are getting better, um working in the shade. Um if and when they go to the community solar program as as a as an opt-in, that that'd be great. Um it'll it'll decrease bills and um uh allow us to be default uh uh solar as well. But but that's that's the other piece of advice that anyone can you can give people is the zero down, uh lots of zero down solar options um available, including firms that are that are run by people that that are town residents. Um so those are the three things I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Again. Right.
All right, thank you, Dan. Thanks for coming over.
Thank you.
Phone drive.
Phone drive.
Okay.
Get those gentlemen writing back for us.
All right, um so we'll move on to announcements. Jill, do you have any announcements for us?
Oh, okay.
Christina, do you wanna talk about the tax bills?
Yes. We are preparing to send down, excuse me, we are preparing to send out our April taxes. The residents should look at us in our mailbox the first week. In April, if you don't receive them, please contact us. We're happy to send you uh duplicate copies. Yes, okay.
Hang on time.
I'll submit whatever else I have in the uh for the e-newsletter tomorrow.
Okay, and I'll hold my supervisor's report for the e-newsletter as well, and that'll bring us to public comment. So uh anyone for public comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address.
Uh Bob Wheeler, one seventy Birchwood Close in Chappaqua. Congratulations on uh your exceeding. I haven't been here since then. Um and Jeremy, you look a lot better outside of television. Um. No, no, I I like your haircut. I want to talk about Chappaqua. It's an absolutely phenomenal community. CCSD is the best school district that we've ever attended as a family and we've been in quite a number of them over the last twenty years. Um my son is graduating this year. It's been fantastic. So the police department is phenomenal. Um everything in this community is is just exactly what you would want. But there's one rift, the flag, okay? When we did Black Lives Matter, I went down every night with a group of people from AT&T where I work and we protested the hell out of the police. And people up here protested. And long after we stopped going down to New York, there were protesters out on the street in Chappaqua with Black Lives Matter. You can still see Black Lives Matter. When I wear this shirt around town, I do a lot of social experiments. I get a lot of cheers. I get a lot of like, how dare you wear that shirt, okay? And I just thought, I knew something was coming up. And then I watched the CCSD board meetings. Oh my God, out of control, people screaming at the board and the board having to say, we're a secular school, we can't do this. And they wanted to change the policy of the of the Middle East curriculum to claim that it was a proxy war between Iran and Iraq. Now, interesting enough, last week, the National Security Agency listed its list of of possible terrorist problems. And they unequivocally said that the Iran and Iraq have nothing to do with Palestine. I lived near Tower, near the World Trade Center, and on nine eleven, uh my office was in the Trade Center. I got out in time. We only lost one person. Um I only had to go to one funeral. But when I read Osama bin Laden's letter that says, I attacked you because you attack us, you attack us in Palestine. And it's on the State Department's website, but they left awful lot of pages. Now, what I wanna talk about today and I wanna present to you is the report from the UN. It's the UN, um, human rights rapporteur on Gaza. Today, she announced that it's an actual genocide, that it's gone past the limits of genocide to where there's no question about it. Now, I wanna know, do you think it's good to placate one partition, one part of the community? And I have no problem with anybody in the community. I have no hatred at all. What I'm asking, is it good to placate one while you just infuriate people like me watching children starve? Watching Galan say I'm cutting off all of the supplies and everything to Gaza? Watching tanks, they're showing this. Now, I don't know what news media you watch. I watch Al Jazeera, Mondeweis, I could subscribe to, I've started to harass the Tourette's, the the Touren, the, I'm sorry, Tehran Times, and try to watch it from a world point of view. The mainstream media in America is just breaking down. If you can get the flag down quickly, it would be a really good thing. Because I am and the rest of the pa- the rest of the people in the community that are not Jewish, because as you know, there are two sets of people that congregate. Some do something on Saturday morning, others do something else. The ones who definitely do something else on Saturday morning don't feel like it. They can come here and say anything. I watched the town board meetings right after. When anybody came up here and said anything, if I wore this shirt, I'd have been stoned and not in a good way. Um they.
Took me a while, took me a while to catch that.
Yeah, yeah. I like being stoned, but I don't wanna be stoned to death.
I'm like calm, man.
Um it was outrageous, but I'm asking you now peacefully. You asked for somebody to come down and state their address and tell you our complaint, our complaint. Take down the flag. Please take it down and not with a ceremony, not giving it to the temple. That is a symbol right now of oppression, of horrific acts of horror. And my last thing is, I have a really problem with the word antisemite. And the notion that if you're against Israel, you're an antisemite. I hope nobody feels that way. Because I think America has done some horrific things, including the killing fields that was brought to us by Kissinger. I don't think the flag's appropriate. I think it's time to take it down and just quietly.
Oh.
And the other thing that bothered me is when they did the Palestinian protest and you decided to throw a surcharge of some five hundred dollars on the kids to do it again, that's just not cruel.
No, we didn't do that. Um so I'm not sure if you've been reading my newsletters or listening to town board meetings. So we determined to lower the flag um shortly.
No, no, I mean do it today. Do it now. The genocide is already present.
You know, we do, we determined. Well, we are, we are going, we are going to do it when we said we would do it. We said we would do it on or about a hundred and eighty days after October.
To fake it. Because it's got Jewish mysticism?
That's what we decided.
I think so.
This is what I mean. This is what I mean. This is why you toward the non-Jewish members of the community.
It's what, it's what we decided. So we are, um. We are a local town board. I would like to get back to discussing what we were elected to do. We're elected to look at zoning laws, potholes, sidewalks. We're not here to discuss international geopolitics.
Then why are you doing it by raising the flag?
Well.
What? That is.
The flag, the flag wasn't raised by a town board vote. The flag went up. Now it's going to be lowered.
You mean somebody just raised an Israeli flag?
And that is all, that is all that we are going to say about it at this time. I no longer wanna discuss international politics at town board meetings. That is not why we're here. I appreciate your your feelings and I understand them. I respect your your opinions. But we are convened here as as a town board to not to discuss international geopolitical matters. So the flag is going to be lowered and that is all, that is all I have to say.
How many people showed up to the rally? Was it a few? Was it a dozen?
Thank you.
Or was it quite a number?
It it it, that is not, I'm sorry. I don't know what your question is, but that is not relevant.
How many people showed up at the rally? Quite a few.
I I don't know, and that's not relevant.
You have a number of citizens that are against this and you sit here and say, no, we're gonna do it. Now, where's the freedom of religion?
If I if I may just very briefly respond.
Of course, yeah.
So just a couple of things. I I do appreciate you coming here and I agree with you that there was a lot of emotion after October seventh, when people were very emotional and I can appreciate that. You never wanna make someone feel uncomfortable. I think they'll all appreciate if you have a tie or nexus to something or in in fact, actual real relationships with something or someone, and it can be an emotional situation. That aside, just some of the words that you used does not help the conversation. I'm not placating anybody. Um in my views, I'm not placating. Placating is really long-term. Hold on, I'm gonna finish speaking.
Nobody. Wait, what did, what would you say it is?
I'm gonna finish speaking and then and we.
Who can get a better word?
So it's not placating. It's something that some people believe in. I myself am a supporter of Israel. I myself believe in Israel. Um that being said, I'm also aware that you, the generic you and you personally, you may not very well be. And there needs to be a time when that flag comes down. Um and we've decided that there is a time. We chose a hundred and eighty days. Um and it's not just the Jews who support it. Um you know, I don't need to go through everyone's religion on the on the board. I happen to be Jewish. Um but there are plenty of people who are not Jewish who support Israel. Nobody. Uh what whatever term, oh, for me, Chris, you spoke, so thank you very much. So nobody wants to see the death of children. You can not support Netanyahu and still support the state of Israel. Um but to say that this is, I I try to pull down some of the words you used. Um having the flag was a sign of oppression, horrific, supporting horrific acts of terror. Um you know, I I don't I don't think that's accurate. We can agree to disagree.
You're just not informed then. You're just not watching the news.
Okay, so um.
Either that or you don't wanna be Jewish.
So you, so you, you, you can certainly make your opinions known and that's fine to make that statement.
No, it's clear.
So um I do think it needs to come down and we are having a plan to take it down. I disagree with some of the statements you said and um no one's being placated. It's something that some people believe in, some people don't, and that's where it is. If I was placating people, just think about it this way, I could easily placate other Jewish people and other people who are not Jewish to support Israel. And we can keep it up as long as there's hostages out. That's not what we're doing. It's, there's never a perfect answer, but we're trying to bring that harmony together.
You could be more horrific if you wanted to be. And Israel, I find every day becomes more horrific than I ever thought they could be. Running over people, wrapping people up and having a tank run over them while they fill it at Al Jazeera?
So I appreciate your your comments and I think we're done and thank you for speaking.
You wanted somebody from the community. You asked for it during your meetings. That's why I came down when there were less of a ruckus and less of a chance of being killed.
No, sir, sir, uh bold statements are are great at the podium. No one's that I'm aware of is threatening to kill anybody in town.
No, I agree.
Especially, so so something bold statement is inappropriate. It all does inflame us even more. So we're talking civilly. I appreciate your opinion. It does need to come down. We are taking it down. Um it'll be imperfect for everybody on both sides. That's just the nature of the beast. And it's terrible, no matter which way you look at it, what's happening in Israel and and Gaza. Nothing that we're gonna do here is gonna change that, but that flag is coming down for right or wrong reasons and that's where we are. So I do thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna, we're going to open a public hearing now. Thank you very much.
Right, do it intentionally. Thank you.
Uh just hang on a second. Is there anyone online for public comment? Okay, please uh unmute yourself and state your name and your address in the town you live in. Um thank you, sir. Someone else is up for public comment. Okay.
Hello, uh my name is Ron Steinberzel. I live in Newcastle.
I.
I'm here, however, as a attorney-inseating. Steinberzel Levy, I apologize if you can see me. I'm trying to, I like to shield my camera because I'm traveling today. Uh and I'm in the back of the car. I apologize. I'm here on behalf of uh Maureen Flaherty and Rick Rogers, who live on Overlook Road in Austin. I'm here on behalf of Maureen Flaherty and Rick Rogers, who live on Overlook Road in Austin. I was going to, uh, I, I, as, I'm, I, I wanna talk about section sixty-five of the town code. I, 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 I have been here before and asked that this be reconsidered. Uh, I'm sure your counsel has advised you that the article seventy-eight statute of limitations runs next month. As, as both an attorney and, uh, and past player, I have, uh, and, and, and a human, I have no interest in suing anyone. I have no interest in suing the town I live in, uh, but I do have an interest in making things right. And, uh. I, 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 I didn't, I really, I, I need to ask if anything has been accomplished on amending section sixty-five to protect personal property rights since last I came forward.
So, just so people understand, this is the, the law regarding filming and, um, videoing on private residential property. Yeah, we, we told you that we would take a look at that law and see if there were any aspects of it that would require amendments. And we will be doing that after the spring break. Is that your question?
Yes, well, regrettably, um, you know, contemporaneously with the violation that was issued to my client
Okay.
and the dismissal of that, the now seemingly unusual dismissal of that entire violation. And the lightning fast speed with which the town amended an obscure law having not addressed that law at, at, at any time in recent years. Places my client and every resident of Newcastle in jeopardy. And you just confirmed for me that unless I bring an article seventy, or somebody brings an article seventy-eight proceeding, the, the people of Newcastle will be left with nothing but lobbying effort with which to reestablish their own personal property rights that this town took away in a really, really reckless manner. And I juxtapose a few things. First of all, um, I've been in this town for, uh, let's see, uh, July will be twenty years. My wife, a half a century. Um, I, many years ago, I spent a lot of my firm's time and money on a pro bono basis on behalf of this town, begging and pleading for a decade. And applying, I believe, three different actions against my own town, all of which lost, but no war is won with a single battle. And I spent ten years begging and pleading this town to not approve the U W M S religious facility on Pines Bridge Road for environmental reasons. I'm an environmental scientist by, by education, I begged and pleaded and showed statutory county reasons why that property could never be built. And the town did not wanna listen to that, and for a decade, engaged in discourse that brought out the most vituperative positions of neighbors against one another. That brought out the very kind of thing I just heard from the person who presented it, who makes my blood curl from the hatred I feel in his words. And I remember once, I remember once during a presentation, I remember once during a presentation, uh, uh, listening to somebody who spoke up in the post-nine eleven world making horrible assaults against the Muslim people. Ignorant assaults against the Muslim people. And I spent a few of my precious minutes saying how, when I go to the courthouse at one eleven Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard in White Plains, the New York State Supreme Courthouse, I walk past every time a statue of him, which reminds everyone that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And, and this board worked so hard to avoid offending anyone, that it, it, it is.
And this board. Sir, sir, I'm not, I'm not understanding.
I, I cannot, I cannot reconcile, I cannot reconcile the, the, the conversation about the leaf blower penalty, where people weren't ready to go from two hundred fifty dollars to five hundred dollars for using a leaf blower because, because of enforcement concerns, and because he thought five hundred dollars would be excessive. And yet this board, in lightning fast speed, changed a law, an obscure law, that as I reminded this board last time I spoke, if you have ever taken a photo of an article of your clothing or a possession to sell on Craigslist or eBay, you are now subject to a thousand dollar per day violation, and, oh yes, up to fifteen days in jail. That's what your law has done, and now, I, I, I'm gonna wait, because it's a great.
No, I don't want people to be alarmed, that is, that is incorrect, okay, that is incorrect. Lawyer shaking his head, I don't want anyone to be alarmed. Sir, we don't have a three-minute timer, egg timer for public comment here, but I would like you to be, to be mindful that we have other people waiting for public comment.
I, I'm sorry, that is correct, because anyone.
We have two public hearings, you're free to give public comment, but I would like to be considering, we've talked about multiple issues here, including Martin Luther King.
I, I'm terribly sorry, would you just be, would you just be a decent board?
And I would just like you to get to the point, we wanna listen to you, and I hear that you don't like, you don't like this law, we're going to look at it after spring break. Um, do you have anything further to tell us?
Do we lose you, Ron?
He muted himself.
Apologies, the fact that you were looking at this after the passing of the statute of limitations
The fact that you were looking at this after the passing of the statute of limitations
is inviting lawsuit that nobody wants, especially me.
That nobody wants.
That nobody wants, please don't do this again.
Please don't do this again.
The Martin Luther King reference was back to a decade of foolish decisions by various town boards that engage in an application that ultimately failed for the very reason that the people were objecting to was that they would never be able to build a big enough subject system there, and they didn't. And, and all that happened was a waste of town money, a waste of people's money, a galvanizing of, of positions against one another. It is, good governance begins with people getting along. And there's no, you cannot reconcile the rights that you took away from private property owners. Do you not think, is there anyone on this board who believes that I should have to get a permit? Let's just say, let's just say, forget the eBay example, which I disagree with, disagree with counsel on, tell me how that doesn't fit, I would love to hear, but let's just say, hey, I, I have a friend who has started a company and wants to bring two people with her to my house to take some pictures of her products on my kitchen table. No one will ever know that any of this is going on. The law says, because this person is going to sell those items, that it is, that I need a permit.
Uh-huh. Ron, Ron, excuse me, we're going to take this up after spring break, we'll look at the law, okay, but, but at this time, we need to move on. And, um, that's really all I can say.
Can we just also add?
Uh, just a moment.
Yeah, Jill, did you wanna add something to a permit I've received?
Yeah, I just wanna let Mr. Steinberzel know that today I received an application from Andrew Simpson for a film permit at your client's quote, home, per, property, at Fifty Overlook.
Quote home?
I'm gonna put, say at home, because that's what you call it, it's their, the property that they own. On Fifty Overlook, um, in Austin. That I told him, if he meets, I'm looking, waiting for insurance, and we discussed payment, and it's for April first, and I have no reason to expect that it's not going to be granted. That's what I told him, that's what I said.
Right, and is like, but you have to, you have to pay to do that.
He always had to pay to do that.
You have, you have a limited, you have a limited number, you have a limited number of clients. You, you're not sure how you can enforce a leaf blower law, but you're sure that you can enforce this law?
Can I, can I just? Can I just add something, just, you know, show to counsel? We, we've, we've heard from his attorney, apparently he has issues with the law. It's my position, we looked at this law, we had a public hearing on this law, it was duly noticed. Okay, I didn't get, no one came out for this meeting when we did this local law. Okay, it was noticed, it was published, so we talked about this, it was, was spoken to in this public meeting. So, with all due respect, if this council has any issues with it, let him raise it, let him bring it. I mean, I've heard article seventy-eight, if that's what he wants to do, let him do it. I don't think it's up for this board tonight to engage in this. We passed the law, if council thinks it can be better, wants to submit something in writing to improve it, look, you're a legislative board, you can always look at it and redo it again if you want, if you think, and I've been doing this thirty years, sometimes local laws work, sometimes you have to redraft it because in practice it may not work, or sometimes you have to tweak it. So, this board tweaked the law, okay, that was problematic, we fixed what we believe was an issue in this law, and they passed it after duly notice public hearing and a duly notice, and it, and like I said, duly held public hearing by this board, so I'm hearing threats of litigation, you wanna bring seventy-eight, fine, bring it. But I think we should move on at this point, your board acting, and as I said.
I, 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 I would like, I would like this one, I would like one can.
Are we entitled to move on at this point, please not, can we move on?
I would like one can to say.
We were wanting to move on from this, um.
Let him just finish.
I would just like one can to say one thing, please. Please.
Well, you have been, so, uh, go ahead and let's finish up.
Man, you, you know, I, I have been very respectful, and I don't feel like this board, who is my board,
And I don't feel like this.
is being respectful to me, but let me just say this, I'm sorry that counsel, I'm sorry that the, your interpretation of what I said was a threat.
Is being respectful to me, but let me just say this, I'm sorry that counsel, I'm sorry that the, your interpretation of what I said was a threat.
Mine was a plea, as a citizen of this town and an attorney, who has pro bono represented its people. Mine was a plea to not, not do this again, please, don't do this again.
Don't do this again.
And, and I think you're right, I think I should have submitted something in writing.
I think I should have submitted something in writing.
And you know what, I did. And in response to my detailed letter explaining what the issues with the prior law was, this board duly noticed in lightning fast speed, six weeks following my letter, never has the board moved it as quickly. Six weeks following my letter, hook actions, amended the law
Who can amend the law directly in contravention of the substance of my letter?
So counsel, I thank you for highlighting that on the record, have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Well, I don't wanna make fun of Ron if you're still, when he's gone. But I just wanna say, because there's a, there's a, there's an assertion or an allegation that there was some, something specifically tied to his client's property. I don't believe, I don't think I had any conversation with the town prosecutors dismissing the case, that's ultimately, uh, when it happened or how it was done. Um, Ron did reach out to me, and I advised, Jill, I advised her counsel at the time, I, I, there was a letter that was shared with at the time. There is no correlation of anything other than a resident made, had an issue, me and, uh, the resident of that, uh, particular address. The case was dismissed, Ron brought that to my attention. Again, I have no recollection whatsoever of speaking to the town prosecutor. It was put on the agenda, I believe at some point, the, the neighbor may have responded at some point while it was a public, uh, a pub, a public comment.
Correct.
Um, you know, I, I will say to Ron that he reached out to me and I probably a hundred percent, I, I take the responsibility, I shouldn't have let him know that we were discussing this. I certainly had no conversation with the, um, uh, the neighbor. But it wasn't lightning speed for any other reason that was brought to my attention, and we moved forward on it. So, for anyone to assume there was something nefarious, there was nothing nefarious. But if it needs to be addressed further, we said we would, and I'm not aware of the statute of limitations on the article seventy-eight, certainly was not aware of that until you even brought it up. Um, but there's nothing nefarious here, if it needs to be fixed, it needs to be fixed, and I'm going with the counsel.
I'll just echo when I first started here, it was like last fall, it was one of the first items on my plate, so it didn't happen in light speed, we actually worked on this. Uh, it was one, again, one of the first things that I discussed with town administration when I, I first day here was, we have to look at the film law. And I looked at it, we reviewed it, we went back and forth with it, so I agree to with you, Councilman Solon, that yes, if, if this doesn't happen overnight, it happened over the course, actually, of months. So, I just want for the record that I would.
And just so people understand, there's significant filming activity in a residential neighborhood.
Thank you. And we received complaints from the residents that live in that area.
Many companies.
Right, so this is a residential neighborhood, right. It was disruptive and impacting their quality of life, and the resident with that address is granted a certain number of days to be allowed, Jill mentioned, you're allowed to film a certain number of days after that.
You can, you can get a waiver, which his client did.
And is currently asking for.
Regardless of who you want, regardless, that's not the issue, the issue is if the law needs to be changed, it needs to be changed, it's gotta be.
Right, well.
It happens.
Yeah, I mean, I, I venture to say we're all homeowners, I wanna make sure that we are not taking our own rights away, so, uh, if it needs to be revisited, we should.
So, so.
And like I said, you have the power to do that, sometimes laws, and when you, when you have them in, in, enacted and you, you actually, in, in practice, sometimes things be tweaked, it happens in land, you land use all the time. Where you think you enacted certain bulk regulations that may make sense, but then in practice, as applications come in, you realize, well, you know what, we have to change that because it's not really working out the way we thought it would. And it gets changed, so that does happen. So, as I said, if this particular individual has something that he wants to change, put it in, your board is a legislative body, we can consider it, you can direct me to look at the law, and that's what we can do. But again, his was a plea, I took it as a threat, that's, and that's, you know, that's what I'm saying, if he's gonna do that, go that route. Again, let, let him go that route, but I, I, at the same time, doesn't preclude you all from taking your comments, if, if you want to revisit it, you can do that as well.
Okay, thank you, Lino, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
You know, I, I wanna say one ad, I, I wanna look back because I made a statement about not having any conversations, I, I think Ron may have, I think I may have been on emails with, with Stu Miller, I, or town prosecutor. Regardless, um, this was not done for anything, there's no, no nefarious anything, so, uh, but I'll look back at my emails, I may have been on emails with Stu.
All right, well, we'll move on to the next public comment, um, who was next? Rob?
That's me, you hear me?
Okay, yes, uh, nevertheless, identify yourself, um, and that is.
Yeah, this is Ron Fleischer from, uh, Oak Hill Road in Japua. That was very entertaining, I have no idea what we were just talking about, but it was entertaining to listen to. Um, any of the cases, I'm sure you guys will resolve that, uh, the right way.
We will.
But just to go back, is Chief Carroll still there?
Yes, he's here.
I appreciate that, I can't see him on the window, but he's still there. I can see, uh, I'm still, I'm still there.
Right here.
Sir, just go over the math again of the days, just so, I was trying to, to write down the four, but I couldn't, it wasn't the math enough. If I take three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, and I have one hundred to eighty to one hundred and eighty-five school days, one hundred two weekend days, one hundred and four weekend days, twenty-four vacation days, there was something else as part of that equation that, that tied into, I think he said nineteen days of the town. But, but, but I, I, I missed that part, that's the part that I couldn't follow.
Sure, um, my officers work two hundred and twenty-seven, eight hour and twenty-five minute days. To track the one eighty-five that they're at the school, it ends up being forty-two. A senior patrolman works twenty-four, excuse me, gets twenty-four vacation days and five personal days. Which brings it down to the amount of days the town is getting from that officer. It's thirteen, but I think fifteen is a more realistic number, 'cause if they take a couple of days off during the school year, we'll get them back over the summer. For example, one of the officers took vacation during the school district year, so we're getting that officer at this point during the summer for nineteen days.
Right, and, and I wanna make sure this is not a criticism of, of any of the officers or the policies, I don't want it to be interpreted by that way at all. So, but the two twenty-seven, the days between two twenty-seven and three sixty-five, that's as matter of how police contracts are structured?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I wanted, that's, that's the part that I wanted to say, okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, wait, but there were, there are training days as well, right, did you cover that?
Two, two twenty-seven encompasses that, you know, the extra twenty-five, you know, uh, minutes actually adds up to about thirteen days a year.
Okay.
You know, which is very consistent with the police department schedule throughout the county, two hundred and forty days. That's also based upon the rotation and the tax, taxing on the body and, you know, police contracts in general.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Jump back in, I.
Thank you very much, Chief Carroll.
I apologize, I just wanna jump back in so to make sure the, the record is clear, I didn't get, I was on CC initially, I came back in September of two thousand twenty-three.
Good night.
So, to be clear, I misstated that I didn't have any conversations, but I don't recall any conversations in person, but I have my emails, but, um, I will look back to see if I did.
Okay.
Move another.
All right. Alright, okay, next we have Scott Brinebart. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you very much, Scott Brinebart, Seven Clough Way, Mount Kisco, which is in the hamlet of Chapua. Um it sounded, I've been in town for thirty six years, so I know a bunch of people here. It sounded. And it sounded as if the board may be coming to the conclusion that the town is in favor of school resource officers. Um that may be true, um but I know I and my family are against him and what I spoke into are against him.
That may be true.
So I think unless the town has done a survey, measures, planning on doing one, I'm not sure that the board should um assume that the town is in favor of more school resource officers. That was the only thing I would make.
Oh Scott, Scott, I just, yeah, I just wanna be very careful here, and I um started the discussion by saying that the town is absolutely not opining on whether the schools should have SROs. I can tell you, I I was on the school board and I'm very sensitive to that, I don't think that the town board should interfere in the school board's decision making process. Um they have sent people to us to explain the fee structure. So that is absolutely all that we did today, we explained what the costs were to the town. And the reason we might, we, you might think that is because we talked about incremental benefits of the extra officers, and that's because uh we're not charging CCSD one hundred percent of the cost. So when there are more officers on balance, there is some sort of incremental advantage to the town to use them to cover for what would be overtime, um the more officers there are, the more diminishing returns there are to the town. So that that was the context of that conversation. Um I'm not sure what gave the impression that we are, we're opining on on whether the schools should have or should not have, but that is certainly not um the intention, and I was concerned that we, that we would um run into that sort of confusion.
Thank you for the explanation, that's what I understood, and I wasn't suggesting that the board was applying rather that it sounded like the board might be putting itself in a position to start looking to hire people for the school board, uh vote game and or school uh final decisions made, that's the only thing I guess.
No, we would, yeah. We would only do that if the school board requests and enters into a contract with the town, a mutually agreeable contract. Um I don't wanna speak for them, I I I'd venture to say I'd be surprised that they would enter into a contract before they know they'd have the money to do it, so therefore I would strongly suggest that that would happen after, after the budget vote. Um but again, you know, I I don't wanna speak for them.
Right.
Um.
I think you dropped off now.
But um, okay. Um I think you dropped off by accident, but anyway, um I'm sure you could hear me. But I just wanna be careful about what is the school district's prerogative and what we do. So I'm not going to tell them when to approach us and when not to, that that is up to them. Yeah. Um, ah, okay, he came back.
I'll read the text.
Yeah, Scott.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize um that my
Yeah, Scott.
my ability with technology, of course it is, um.
Yeah, that's okay, um.
No, no, I'm I'm fine, I appreciate uh your explanation, uh you didn't have anything else to add.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um anyone else for public comments? Um is it Robbie?
So we, so we have our fire marshal and Bob Cioli, our town engineer, along with Tom DePaul, and they're here for our public hearings that we're gonna start.
Oh, okay, okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, so um I'd like to open our first public hearing, may I have a motion to open a public hearing on a local law to amend the provisions of chapter forty eight, the building construction and fire prevention in chapter forty, I'm sorry, in chapter sixty eight, fire prevention law. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. And um let's see, who wants to start?
I can give it a shot.
Okay, go ahead, Lino.
Sure, so uh first of all, I wanna thank Tom DePoli and and Robbie Bancroft for helping us, you know, with this, with this local law. This is a law to amend chapter forty eight, which is building construction in sixty eight fire prevention. Uh the real purpose of this law is to provide more safety measures, particularly in the light of uh homes that have EV vehicles and batteries. So what this law does uh from a high level, it 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 provides, for example, it defines electric vehicles and for new construction, I'm just giving highlights. It requires um that you have fire sprink- uh fire sprinklers in the house uh for for these, for new construction, we're not talking about existing structures. If it's an existing structure, if you're exceeding the FAR by fifty percent of your, then you have to put in fire sprinklers to account for this. The other thing we did was uh at least for for uh fire safety, we're we're gonna require placeting for homes that have EV chargers and EV vehicles, so uh that'll be signed, it'll be put up up on the sides of homes to let fire department, anyone know, uh you know EMS, that there are, there is a charging apparatus in the, in the homes. So that's, in essence, what we did with this local law, we we kind of just added definitions of EVs and uh fires, uh fire sprinklers when they need to be installed. Uh and with respect to chapter sixty eight, we specifically stated any new home or new garage that contains EV or charger, after the effective of this law, assuming it's passed, is gonna require some type of fire sprinkler suppression system. So um Tom, if you had anything else, Tom DePoli, our building inspector, if you wanna add to any of that?
Currently, we require all new homes to have sprinkler systems, we're just adding the fact that the garages will themselves be have a sprinkler system.
Right.
Okay.
Right, just to give additional coverage, 'cause that would be the source of the fire if the electric vehicle goes up or a scooter or other device in the garage.
Right, okay. Alright, any other comments, Bob? Robbie? Well, okay, um at this time, is there anyone um to come up to make a public comment on this public hearing? No one in person, is there anyone online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, seeing none, um.
You wanna leave it open for written comment?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Okay.
So could we hold it open for written comment, um our our next meeting is actually um April ninth.
In my mind.
So we've got uh um a holiday week um coming up next week, so do we wanna hold it open for um until the twelfth, and um we would put it back on the agenda uh on for the sixteenth?
Did you wanna close public hearing, just leave it open, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Yes, so we would close the public hearing, leave it open for written comments to uh Friday, April twelfth, close of business.
Close of business usually like, like noon?
Okay, noon is bad, fine, noon is is fine, we're we're giving plenty of time, let's do noon on uh on uh April twelfth, that's a good idea, okay?
You want, okay.
noon on April twelfth. And it'll be back on the agenda uh for for sixteen.
Okay, so may I have a motion, so Lino, remind me again, how do I close this portion and leave it open for?
So I would just entertain uh a motion to close the public hearing, but leave written comments open until April twelfth, that's what I'm.
But technically, the written portion is not considered public comment, since we're closing public.
Not the written comment, right, you're closing the public hearing portion of it, which, yeah, the public hearing,
Public hearing, right, got it. Yeah.
but you're leaving it open to entertain written comments up until, is April twelfth, Jill?
Okay.
April twelfth at noon, so that would be the motion.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alright, um well, no, Lino cannot make.
Oh, I highly agree with the motion, but.
Yeah, they're not. Okay, so we wanna say what the motion is?
I did. I move to close the public hearing and keep written comments open until April twelfth at noon.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, and now I'd like to um entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the local law to amend the provisions of chapter one oh eight A on stormwater management and erosion and sediment control.
Someone.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I'll take this one too.
Oh, you wanna take, go ahead, Lino.
Well, thank you. Sure, so this is a local law amending chapter one oh eight, and just, we also have Bob Cioli, who was also instrumental in helping me with this as well. Uh chapter one oh eight, stormwater management, erosion, sediment control. Um this law i- is is in essence, um one of the things that when I first started here in Newcastle was the, you know, stormwater is a very uh it's a big deal here, and particularly when it came to projects where work was being done. And what what was happening was you would have like projects, I'll I'll I wanna say segmented, to avoid certain stormwater mitigation requirements that that were being done. So your local law, the way your law before had, I think it was a five hundred square feet of disturbance, but what we've done is, we we've actually changed it to a a scale with respect to properties located in the quarter, you know, our one four A district, half acre, one acre, two acres, so if you're gonna be disturbing, like for example, in a quarter acre, two hundred fifty square feet of new impervious area, you're gonna have to comply and do some stormwater mitigation. Um and what also this law also does is it gives a three year look back, so if you apply for a building permit with respect to a, let's say, a um a project in your home that involves impervious surface, we can go back and look three years from the date of that permit to make sure you're in compliance with this law, so you didn't actually, okay, well, I'm gonna build, let's say, a deck one year, or I'm gonna shed another, it just adds up to impervious surface to try to get away from the stormwater mitigation requirements. So that's what this law does, it it actually, it's more stringent than what what you would normally require, but it's in line with other communities in terms of stormwater. So Bob, I don't know if you want to add anything, Bob Cioli?
Uh thank you, uh Gina, good evening, uh
Gina.
town board members. Uh basically, the old law that we once had, that was developed in June, April of two thousand seven, was working off a one thousand square feet, that was for us
Basically, the old, uh, ones that.
all the zoning districts, and applied to commercial properties as well. Um but I guess over the years, there's been some instances, especially some of the smaller properties, where they did do some previous services, but it did not trip the wires, and we had some stormwater concerns and complaints from downstream properties nonetheless. So uh what we're trying to do here is anticipate that in the future as well, and just bump it down a little bit, uh to two fifty for the order, five hundred for the half, a thousand for the one, which used to be, of course, awards, and make the two acres, two thousand square feet, which by the way happens to be about two point three percent of each lot size area, if it's exactly those areas in the zoning districts, so. I think it's gonna help the water quality, we we have a very stringent uh um D E C uh attributes we have to report to, because keep in mind, probably about seventy percent of this town is located in the east of Hudson Motorrad, and the Foster's restricted area, which requires additional stormwater measures, especially for water quality. So I think it's certainly gonna help and improve the water quality and downstream flooding attributed to other properties, especially in the smaller lots.
And and I just wanna know for the record too, we did receive correspondence on this local law from uh Datum Architecture Planning and Construction, offering some modifications to the law, and what I can do, again, like you left the other public hearing open for in comment, I can take these comments and go over with Bob Cioli, see if there's anything here that's worthwhile that we may wanna tweak, um.
Yeah, we.
Well, we're not gonna close this hearing tonight, we're gonna keep it open for another opportunity for residents to hear.
No, we're we're actually. Yeah, we we are gonna keep keep this open, um.
Yeah, 'cause I think we both have comments.
It, yeah, it's interesting, one of the things that uh after talking to uh Bob Cioli, uh our town engineer this afternoon,
Yeah.
one of the things that's that's noted in the letter uh was a um a recommendation that perhaps we could look at Harrison and see what theirs, their law looks like, which Bob and I will will do, he's trying to explain it to me, but I'm not an engineer, so it's gonna take me a little bit longer.
Okay. Right, right.
But one of the things that he did raise as a differential, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, is that uh Newcastle, seventy percent within the east of Hudson, Harrison is seven percent within the east of Hudson, so
Right, yeah, okay.
It's a big difference, I mean, the it's the apples, oranges.
it, there is a difference um in insofar as, you know, the the stringent uh regulations that we are subject to. But um what I would like to do is, uh I don't know if there's other people that wanna speak on this tonight um that are here, but certainly we would hold it open um till the the, we will, we will continue the public hearing to the twelfth to allow an opportunity for this architect to come in, he was, you know, very.
If a local resident reads that to me, and also send an email to the town, so he should have an opportunity, he's just unavailable, unfortunately.
Yes. No, absolutely, okay. Yeah, no, no problem.
And and just for the record, I don't know if I uh, like I said.
I hear you said it's me as well.
The the letters dated, uh this is from Datum from um January, I mean, March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four is when we received this letter, so again, we'll take a look at it and see if there's anything in here that is, you know, something that we can include in in the existing draft.
Oh, thank you.
I I thought what was compelling about the letter was the concern for residents with quarter acre and half acre properties, and that would be too financially ulnorous on them, so I just wanna hear about that.
Yeah, it's interesting, because, and Bob can speak to this, um the com- the complaints that um the town has received have to do with quarter acre properties, where
Right.
That's the most.
um significant amounts of impervious surfaces are installed.
Mm-hmm.
Um and they never trip the stormwater requirements because it's so large, it's the, it was, it's the same as if it's, you know, half acre or you know, acre or two acre, um and so quarter acre doesn't, and there there have been some
Mm.
significant um negative effects to neighboring properties that we were just powerless to um intervene on because of the consequences.
Yeah, there are many different sides to
Interesting.
Yeah.
to the story, there were significant flooding impacts that some people experienced, and so
Mm.
Right, but I I did sort of, I I guess, you know, given the house that I live in,
that's not, but we need to hear both sides.
I I was struck by the the reference to, you know, sort of old homes on such small properties, and how
Mm-hmm.
you know, s- sometimes you need to make changes to the property to make it livable, and so I just
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
you know, for people who live on s- the smallest properties in town, you know, I just wanna take care not to make things too difficult for them to make changes, while keeping in mind that there could be a, right, uh an impact on neighbors.
Yeah.
I mean, there is a balancing, I will tell you, just doing land use, but it's, there's also the other side of that coin too, where you have the s- the smaller properties, because you don't have enough room, so the more impervious you put on there, it's actually consequences become worse, especially for those who are downstream, and where it's the water's gonna go somewhere, and when you add a small property like that, you're not required to do any mitigation at times, so and when you take that, and again, not everyone does this, but I'm saying those offenders who do it, they'll chip away at it, right, so they'll put it in a patio, then they'll put in a deck, and then, or they'll put in uh another addition. But all the while, the water has to go somewhere, right, and at least what this local law does, yes, it may make it a little bit more uh expensive, if you will, for for mitigation, but on the, on the backside, there is, it it does help with the prevention of flooding and and, you know, stormwater when it rains, especially when you have all that impervious surface on a smaller lot, so that that's kind of the the balance.
Right, I mean. We don't wanna say that because you have a smaller lot that
Right.
you can cause flooding in your neighbor's
in your neighbor's lot.
lot, that that's, that's really what we're trying to avoid.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Public comment?
But uh anyway, this is public comment, so uh I would invite anyone at this time to come up for a public comment.
Public comment.
Um please come up to to the microphone, state your name and your, the street and town you reside in.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Su Qingqiang, and I live in twenty seven Piney Road. Uh this is regarding this uh the public hearing for the the stormwater. Uh I I live in the quarter acre uh the property, and uh my neighbor, who is behind me, also a quarter acre property. And they did like the lawyer said, uh in twenty twenty one, they increased the the imperials for uh under one thousand square feet, but within half year, they want to build the another under six thou- six hundred feet of deck. And I want to show you, since the 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 renovation that they did, uh this is the flooding of my backyard. This is all the flooding.
The river.
Mm. So uh.
That's significant.
Yeah.
He won't mind.
We'll pass it, yeah, we'll pass it.
Yeah, and I have, I wanna show uh all the boards.
Okay, can I, just for the record, can I get a copy that is just let 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 um, let us know what we're adding in, so.
Oh, yeah, we're going to, yeah. I'm not against to anyone who want to renovate the 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 size of the house, but should not go the stormwater to the neighbor. And I live here for almost twenty years, I never had a flooding issue before that.
Mm-hmm.
That's why I want to come here, bring up my concern.
So so this was, so my, and I'm sorry if I missed that, was this compliant with the current law, or just wasn't, and and it just, even with the current law, it really destroyed your property at all?
Yes. It, because we didn't.
No triggers for this, there was.
We we don't, we don't, we didn't do a cumulative.
Right.
So the project gets broken up, so that it, it, you know, yeah.
Right, I explained it forward, I was just making sure this was compliant.
Yes.
But unfortunately, the ramification was pretty serious to you.
Yeah.
So what did the neighboring property put in? So what did the neighboring property put in? It was uh, it was in current, in.
They they on top of uh uh next to the the current building, they in- increased uh less than thousand square feet.
The brand new house.
The brand new house.
Oh, 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 okay, gotcha, okay.
In the quarter acre yard.
Sure, is what was his response or her response?
My neighbor?
Yeah.
Uh I did ask the builder and the owner, the builder told me that they have the permission.
And that was it? And there's, I don't mean to mitigate your problem.
No.
And now the property next to it is being, a new house is being built.
Okay. Can this law help with this situation?
Has my.
Yeah, well, if if this law wasn't in place, they wouldn't be able to do, I mean.
I mean, alright, but. Right, but with the three, three-year look back.
But there's a retroactive look back.
But and well, it wouldn't apply, now, if they were doing this work now, let's say the law was enacted, they were doing this, they would have to go back, I mean, you could go back three years and look to make sure they were in compliance in terms of whatever communal impacts they were doing. So right now, you don't have this on, you don't have this on the books. So this particular property, whoever was doing it, it weren't required to do stormwater mitigation.
Right, but once this is on the books, would she have a recourse?
Well, it's gonna apply to new construction, right? So if this particular neighbor does this again, they're gonna have to get a permit for it and it's gonna start counting from the day of that building permit, right? So whatever whatever's new, cause it's again, the law's not in place, there's no re- there's no retroactivity doubt today. It would apply when the law's enacted, so.
Right, but if it's enacted in two months from now.
Then, right, but it would it'll it would go to the building permit. Yeah, so technically, they pulled the building permit within that time. You know, we would have to, we have to make jury, and then we can look back at that building permit.
And is there any recourse after the fact? And even if it's up to code when it's being built, is there any recourse that your neighboring, that, I mean, you're damaging your neighbor's property?
Other other than a private dispute between the neighbors, there would be between the two neighbors, that issue.
But, so.
And and lastly, we would get involved if we actually proved the stormwater and there was an issue there, then that somehow the town could be.
So there may be, but that's in private, unfortunately, a private issue.
Right, but most of the time, it's a private issue. And just and just for the record, this this particular resident handed three, four photographs.
There's more, there's.
Oh, there's more? Oh, there's more, so we just.
Some are duplicate.
Uh not duplicate. I I give it, I try to give, I try to give the 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 town board uh uh the evidence, like that.
Well, I I can make copies, you know, okay, so we can see what you have, I think.
Cause there are about thirteen photographs taken of the neighboring property. I'm just gonna summarize, showing various flooding conditions. Again, for various dates, from September of twenty twenty three, April, um June, May, all, this is twenty twenty two, twenty three. And then we have also, I guess, looks like a tax map showing the 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 three lots.
Yeah. That's the map for our area.
So again, just wanna note that for the record, that is part of it for this particular public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Lino.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question, the new lot that's being built.
Um, okay, so i- if anyone else would like to come up, please um state your name and uh
I've been sitting so long, I can't walk, sorry.
Please state your name and uh, and the street and town you live in.
Uh, Lino, I got you.
Uh twenty nine Piney Road. Um I live next to Sue.
Mm.
So the new property that's being built behind us, that also wouldn't have this new rule.
No, yeah, cause it's not enacted yet.
But it, but it could be if it's enacted.
I- if we enact it and the building permit is applied for, okay, we can, yeah, I have to read this again, but we can go back and take a look within three years of the building permit. But if they pulled a building permit for work
Yeah.
that was approved, if it was today, whatever work is approved is not subject to this law yet.
Okay.
But if they, if the law's enacted and they come back and wanna do additional work, they're gonna have to pull a building permit, and then this does kick in and that gives us the look back.
Mm.
Okay, but for whatever was done prior to this law in terms of building permit,
Mm.
whatever that building permit says, as long as they build in accordance with that, they're okay. If they violate that building permit,
Yeah, well, I think they're probably pretty close to building, so
it's always gonna go out and. Yeah.
that's what we were here for.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Anyone online for public comment? We don't see anyone online. Okay, so we're going to leave the public hearing open until twenty twelve?
Yeah.
Um wait, I was a second, I'm sorry. It's it's continued, I I apologize. I it's continued until the ninth.
Not the sixteenth.
I would.
I mean, not the twelfth.
Yes, the, the ninth, because that's our next uh town board meeting, right.
No, so I would just take a motion and continue. Ordinarily. So I'll just make a motion to continue this public hearing to
Yep.
So.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Lino, aye.
Is that Tina? Is that right, if I do that?
Uh, it's Lino, thank you.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, good night, good night. Alright.
Bye-bye.
Gino.
I didn't, I heard Lino, someone repeated. Um, okay.
Okay.
Alright, so we are up to our consent agenda. Let's see, do we have any, any other resolutions?
We have a, we have a couple of changes on the uh consent agenda. Um
We're tweaking off ten and eighteen.
I believe that's correct.
The cameras and the
Yeah.
public hearing on the
Yes.
link vote.
Did we have anything in addition, Christina?
No, um, nothing additional.
Uh. Okay.
We have the um we have the um um rec, um where, the um the civic rep.
That's in the consent agenda, number fourteen.
Great, thank you.
We're starting ready to live this time.
That's gone too.
You wanna start right to last? Okay.
We're a little kibble brother this time, retarded, we have to move on.
Yeah, I did that last time when you weren't here.
Oh, thanks.
But uh but, but we could so, we could do it.
Yeah, so we will. You're reading.
Okay, alright, alright, we're starting from the right. Go ahead.
But you must.
Oh.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Okay, I move to adopt the items one through, well, one through nine and eleven through seventeen as listed on consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Jeremy?
Oh, okay. I moved retroactively approved payment claims amount of four hundred and four thousand nine hundred sixty dollars fifty cents listed on the summary A P check register detail after detail report dated March twenty first of this year, checks were printed and distributed each claimant listed on Thursday, March twenty first, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lino. I move to authorize the hiring of Carly Hannafin for the position of student intern within the town clerk's department for a period of six weeks for a lump sum of one thousand five hundred dollars effective May sixth, twenty twenty four. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Holly?
I move to authorize the appointment of Holly Mountclough-Black as a member of the Holocaust Human Rights Committee for term of two years effective April first, twenty twenty four through March thirty first, twenty twenty six.
All in favor?
So I would need a second.
Second. I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I just have one thing, please?
Yes.
Um I'd just like to announce that this is Tiffany's last town board meeting. Tiffany is, I wish her much congratulations and much good luck. She is leaving to accept a position with uh con head? No, Metro North, sorry, in the H R.
Oh, she's shaking her head.
No, not Metro, where where are you working?
M T A.
M T A, I see.
M T A.
I see.
M T A in the H R department, and we're gonna miss her and we wish her well.
Oh, congratulations, Tiffany.
Absolutely, you will be missed.
Congratulations.
That's a great, that's a great move and we will miss you and best of luck to you.
You will be missed. Their gain.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our loss.
That's for sure.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay.
You can always come back, public comment.
You can always come back, that's right.
What are you gonna do Tuesday nights, huh? What are you gonna do?
Well, I hate to adjourn now.
I know.
Now on that note.
I moved to adjourn.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, thank you.